Good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for April 5th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July 15, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This meeting is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorney attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep the video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When your hand, when the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, press star nine to raise your, to raise and lower again your hand. Again, if you're on the, on this meeting by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Rugiro reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Please lower your hand as soon as you have spoken so the Miss Ambassador knows who else to call upon. These instructor instructions will be repeated through the meet, throughout the meeting. Before we start, let's take a quick roll call. Mr. Rugiro?
Aye.
So, Mr. Rugiro today is the, is the acting secretary. Mr. Olick?
Good morning, I'm here.
Good morning, Ms. Dahl.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Ligris.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Jeff, Mr. Hampton from the BPDA.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. And is Mr. D'Amico here from BTD? Okay, we will hear from him as necessary. So, go ahead, Mr. Rugiro.
Good morning, calling the first extension for 930 case BOA 904095, 1423, 1425, Tremont Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney John Pugini, 10 Forks Road in Braintree, on behalf of the applicant. We are seeking a one-year extension. The current...
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Pugini.
For this extension, this relief was originally issued on March 1st, 2019, and we granted the first extension on March 1st, 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original relief remains valid until June 6th of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm that, for the record, that the relief is valid until that date, and now the applicant seeks an additional extension until June 6, 2023.
Madam Chair, I move that the board confirm that all relief, all applicable tolling remains valid through June 6, 2022, and further move that we grant an additional extension through June 6, 2023, which of course would include any and all of applicable tolling.
We have a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling next case, BOA 892-898-267, Old Colony Avenue. Name an address for the record. Doug, Doug Stefanoff, are you on?
Let me check to see if that's Doug and Jim. Is that you listed as Doug and Jim? Sent a request to unmute you?
No, that is Doug and Jim. We are here for...
Madam Chair, this is Attorney George Morancey. I can handle this if Doug is not here.
Yes, please, put your name and address on the record, please.
Yes, my name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston.
The board, thank you. The board originally granted relief on December 20th, 2019, and it granted its first relief until December 20th, 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original relief remains valid until March 27, 2023. I recommend that we confirm this for the record.
Madam Chair, I move to confirm that all applicable relief remains valid with all applicable tolling through March 27th of 2023.
There a second? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling next case, BOA 822-528-71 Mozart Street. Name an address for the record.
Let's move on, Mr. Rugiro.
Calling next case, BOA 101-5942-17 Wombach Street.
Hi, this is Roberto Leon, the architect for the project.
Please put your address on the record.
From Chompsford, Massachusetts.
Okay, go ahead.
The board originally granted relief on February 28, 2020, so first extension, so this is the first extension request. However, tolling applies to this relief. With tolling, the original relief remains valid until June 5, 2023. I recommend that we confirm that.
Madam Chair, motion to confirm that all relief, inclusive of all applicable tolling, is valid through June 5, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Calling next case, BOA 463-655-120, West Fourth Street.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, 75 Arlington Street, in Boston, attorney for the applicant.
Okay. This is a long one, so. The board originally granted this relief on December 14th of 2015. Two separate abutters appeals decisions, and both cases were resolved by April 19th, 2017. The board granted the first extension of this relief until April 19th, 2020. The board then granted a second and third extension of the relief until April 19th, 2022. However, tolling applies to this relief, so the second and third extensions were unnecessary. With tolling, the first extension remains valid until July 25th of 20... However, the applicant had already received their extension of the relief until April 19th of 2022 before the tolling expired. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that its prior extension of the relief included all applicable tolling. The applicant is before the board today requesting an additional extension. I recommend the board grant the additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that it would only be the applicant's second necessary extension rather than its third.
May I have a motion? I mean, sorry, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, was Mr. Rugiro, did he make the motion?
Oh, sorry, no.
I don't think I did.
I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead a bit. Go ahead.
So, if we could just quickly make the motion, but Mr. Lacasse, I presume that this is in a request for a one-year additional extension, is that correct?
One-year additional extension through, I guess that would be...
April 19th, 2023.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the motion, Madam Chair, is to confirm that any and all applicable relief remain valid with all applicable tolling through April 19th, 2022, and further move to grant additional relief to this applicant through April 19th, 2023, which of course will include any and all applicable tolling.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lacasse, please tell the applicant that since the case was settled in 2017, we understand because of COVID and the tolling, et cetera, et cetera, but please make sure that this project continues to proceed.
I'm happy to report that we're nearly concluded the BPDA design review process and permits are in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just gonna go back real quick to 71 Mozart Street. Is anyone on for that? Okay. Madam Chair, the recommendation is on this is... No, never mind. Okay.
Okay, let's just move on.
Calling next case, Board of Final Arbiter, BOA 927-849-48 to 62 Brookline Ave.
Can you hear me all right, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Quilty, can you please tell us why you're here for the record?
Yes, ma'am, Dennis Quilty, Attorney, 28 State Street, representing the applicant. This is a recreational cannabis facility which the board granted relief and granted it's subject to a one-year sunset, if you will. During, during the last year, that period would be up sometime in the next few weeks. The applicant had yet to receive its state licensure until approximately 30 days ago, so clearly we haven't been able to operate the facility at this point in time and wanted to get back in front of the board to clarify the start and end date, if you will, of the one-year sunset. We dealt with the staff attorney. I had originally filed a, an extension request. It was determined that the more appropriate way to bring this to the board was under Board Final Arbiter, and we are here today in that regard. With me this morning is Ross Bradshaw, who is the owner, operator of the facility, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. We simply haven't been able to complete the licensure to get in a position to be open and are asking for relief so that we can get back to you after we're open and you've had a chance to see how the operation goes.
Okay, Mr. Quilty, so the question for you is, the, do you recall, because I'm sure that you've looked at the link to the hearing about the reasons why, if there were any, for the one-year, for the one-year review?
I'm pretty sure, Madam Chair, there were concerns raised by the Fenway Park, which is, you know, quite near the facility, that they wanted to make sure that the operation was consistent with good business practices. And I believe it's in that context that the board, you know, created the one-year sunset. You know, the applicant feels perfectly capable of providing, you know, good, good business practices for that period, but he hasn't been able to be open yet, and our relief would expire, you know, as I said, probably in the next three weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, from my recollection, it was operational stuff, so I would be comfortable with a motion to clarify that it's, they come back one year from the issuance of certificate of occupancy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling next case, BOA 128...
Mr. Rugiro, can you find out if there are any deferrals or withdrawals, please?
Yep, sorry. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 930? All right, hearing none. BOA, calling, first 930 case, BOA 1282481, 200 Byron Street. The violation is Article 53, Section 52, roof strike restriction, Article 53, Section 9, floor area ratio excessive, Article 53, Section 9, building height excessive in stories, Article 53, Section 9, front yards insufficient, Article 53, Section 9, side yard insufficient, Article 27 T5, East Boston I-Pod applicability. Name an address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and board members. I'm Attorney Peter T. Lyons, 99 Fulton Street, Boston, Massachusetts. And I have prepared before you today, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Jack Mahoney of Landmark Realty. Also with me today, Mr. William Chalfant and Mr. Matt Panacci of the KDI Architectural Firm, who have assisted us in this endeavor.
Okay, Mr. Lyons, we have a long agenda today, so I want you to immediately get to the point. We are concerned about all of the violations, and what is of interest to us is also the extension of living space into the basement. So, please proceed.
Okay, this is in East Boston Neighborhood District and is in a, in a two-family zone. The owner of the property proposes to renovate an existing single-family dwelling and transform it to a two-family dwelling, which requires a change of occupancy. There is no bedrooms or anything in the basement that will be living area, and we're seeking to have conditional use permits issued to allow this project to move forward.
Okay, so tell us precisely what is the use of the basement?
I believe it's a living area, but I may divert Will Chafan to respond to that.
Morning, Madam Chair. Will Chafan calls for design, Somerville, Mass. The basement is going to be used as a family area as well as a laundry area. There will be no living room, no bedrooms, rather, in the basement.
And any proposed kitchen or kitchenettes in the basement?
No, I see on this plan, which is an outdated plan, there seems to be a kitchenette shown. There is none planned for the basement.
Tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height and the access to meters, et cetera, independent of entrance to the dwelling unit.
There'll be a egress window out the rear with a ladder accessing it. The basement has existing windows in it, and the ceiling height will be around seven foot six.
Seven foot six, okay. And then tell us about how this change of occupancy is supposed to occur, and tell us about the proposed size of each unit.
Yes, so the, as Attorney Lyons mentioned, existing single-family being proposed to turn into a two-family. Each unit will be around, I believe it's 1,500 square feet, three-bedroom. We're providing parking in the rear via a new curb cut, parking for each unit, and this is taking a previously dilapidated building and trying to renovate it.
And what's the square footage of the lot? The lot's square footage?
3,700 square feet, Madam Chair.
Okay, so it is, even for a one-family, it's small since the two-up, it requires 4,000 square feet for the additional.
Correct.
So, are you proposing a rooftop?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so tell us about the building height.
The building height, we are proposing a 33 and 1/2-foot-high building. We're allowed 35. That is measured from the grade. The building is, I believe, 2 and 1/2 feet above grade for the first floor. Basement is slightly raised out.
And so you're sided because it's not 2 and 1/2 stories, it's three, essentially?
We, well, it was our, our position that it was 2 and 1/2 stories, but we believe this.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. How are the plans, oh, yes, and can you tell Ms. Ambassador which plan we should be looking at to look at, to see the parking and the parking layout?
I would go to, there you go, A020.
Okay, so you have open space and then the three parking spots, got it. And is that a shared driveway or not?
Correct.
It is a shared driveway.
Yes, yes, sure.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good. They, confirming what the proponent is addressing, there is a, says a wet bar shown, but it is called out as a family room, doesn't look like there's any cooking, and I think the height is consistent with the other buildings on the street, so no questions from me.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, what is the current use of the basement?
It's mechanical space and storage.
And that will, and how will that function be continued in the, on the future plans?
There is space going to be allocated for the mechanical equipment towards the front of the building for easy access to existing utilities in the street. The heating and cooling units will be independent within the units themselves.
Okay, and the final question, you said the floor-to-ceiling height was seven foot six. What is the floor-to-grade height of the basement?
I believe it is, we, I think we have about a 2 and 1/2-foot extension above grade to underside of floor.
To underside of floor or to the first floor? I thought you said it was...
To the first, to the first floor, pardon.
All right, so it means underside of floor is probably at least a foot less than that.
Yes. There is some grade change across the front of the site, so it varies.
Well, this, I mean, basically it's below grade.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Venison, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an abutters meeting for this project in January 2022. That was well-attended by abutters. Concerns were over window placement, which the applicant worked closely with the abutter to redesign. Concerns, concerns were also regarding heights and most specifically side setback. Project was also presented before the Harborview Neighborhood Association, which voted in opposition 22 to 12. Our office has received one letter in opposition, one letter of concern regarding communication throughout the project, and side setback, and a petition with 32 neighbors supporting the project. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Go ahead, mine, that was, I was going to mention that your hand was raised. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, mine are raised, representing the carpenters. You didn't want to go and represent a supporter of this project.
And Madam Chair, we do have one additional raised hand, Joseph?
Madam, Madam Chair, we do have letters of support and one letter of opposition.
Okay, and then Joseph, you've been muted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Joseph Dewhurst. I live at 190 Papa's Press Road in Bristol, Rhode Island. I am the father of Maddie Dewhurst, who is the nearest abutter. Maddie couldn't be here today because she's on a plane, otherwise she would be here, so I'm speaking as her representative. So, to reiterate, she's the nearest abutter immediately to the north at 180 Byron Street. I'd say first that she favors, Maddie favors rehabilitation of this property. You know, she rehabilitated the property that she lives in, and that work was written up in the Boston Globe, so she's all in favor of, of eliminating the eyesore.
Tell us, tell us if she has any concerns.
She does.
Okay, so just bullet point them for us, please.
Absolutely. There are basically two. One is the one that was referenced earlier, which is that the third floor does not appear to comply with, you know, the size stipulations. It's clearly much...
Got it, got it. And the second point?
The second is that there's a foot and a half between her property line and the existing basement. That can't be changed, but the extension, the addition in the rear continues to follow that line, foot and a half away from her property line, rather than adhering to the required seven-foot setback. She would like that to be setback.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
May I, and let's see, BPDA, Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We've recommended approval with proviso. I want to defer to BTD on the off-street parking. It looks tight back there, but I defer to Bob on that recommendation. We would just ask for design review, especially when it comes to changing the roof line. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review. I do think it needs some help on the roof line, and it would be good, I think, to look at the rear extension to see if there's anything that you can do for the abutter with BTD review of the, the parking.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Go ahead.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Just, so, good luck. I just want to make sure that most applicants know this, but today is a six-member board. We have a six-member board, and for approval, you need five members in support of the project. So, just a reminder that if you need to have an administrative deferral, you may, you may ask for that. So, let's, let's proceed. Next case, please.
Calling next case, BOA 129-9105, 219 Parrish Street. The violation is Article 25, Section 5, flood hazard district, Article 53, Section 9, floor, floor area ratio excessive, Article 53, Section 9, side yard insufficient, Article 53, Section 12, rear yard insufficient, Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking insufficient, Article 53, Section 8, youth forbidden, Article 53, Section 4, green belt protection overlay district applicability, Article 53, Section 9, additional lot area insufficient, Article 53, Section 9, building height excessive in stories, Article 53, Section 9, building height excessive in feet, Article 53, Section 9, unusable open space insufficient. Name an address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Noel DeCarlo, for a project at 219 Parrish Street, which is the middle rendering that you're, out of the three buildings that you're looking at on the sheet. The proposal is to raise an existing commercial structure, which has been used as a garage space, probably to be worked on years ago, and to erect a new residential building with six units and four ground-level interior parking spaces. The layout of this building is on our first floor. That's a good picture of what's existing. On our first floor would have the main entry and second egress entry. It would have a accessibility lift to the second floor, and it would house the four parking spaces, two in the back, two on the side, and then bike racks in the back corner. The, it would also have rear yard access. The, it would also have a rear yard access. The second floor of the building going up would house units one and two. Unit one is six hundred and thirty square foot, one bedroom, one bath with a study.
So, Mr. Counselor Drago, can you please just summarize, you know, what the average sizes are of bedrooms? Go ahead.
Yes, we've got three one-bedrooms with a study, Madam Chair, and the average size is seven hundred and five square feet. And we've got three two-bedrooms at an average size of nine hundred and fifty-five square feet. There are only rear decks proposed on this project, so there's no roof decks on the structure. I can go over the violations one by one.
Yes, there are, there are quite a few that you have here, so go ahead.
Yes, so minimum lot size, it's a thousand square feet for each additional unit. We are twenty-five hundred square feet, so similar to the buildings, the building to the right of us. We meet lot with frontage, F A R allowable is one, we're at two-point-five. Building height for this area is three stories, thirty-five feet. We are at four stories, thirty-eight feet, six inches, but we're exactly matched to the heights of each building next to us. Our rear yard, based on the B P D A recommendation, we actually brought that up. So we now are at fifteen feet, but thirty is required. And then parking, we do have four spots, but six would be required. We are in a flood hazard district. None of our utilities are in the bottom floor, and none of, there's no livable space, only parking at the ground level. This is slab on grade. So I can answer any questions that the, that the board may have.
I'm just curious, because you did say that there was a lift.
Yes.
In the event of a flood, how would the handicapped unit be accessed?
So there, so there, there is a lift through the front door. So it's right when you come in the mezzanine, so it's not in the rear of the building. And then there is a second means just upstairs, but that would be the only access.
And tell us about context, because this is a three-F.
Sure.
Three-family district, and you're doubling the number, the unit count. So tell us about the surrounding area.
Directly to the right of us is a building exactly the same height and size that was approved a few years back. Across the street, and they're all four-story in this immediate area. Next to us is four-story, that's half the lot size, that is three bedrooms. Both of those buildings go back further than ours, and the rear, we've cut ours in. Across the street at one ninety-one Parrish Street is a four-story, thirty-two-unit apartment complex, recently built, twenty-one parking spaces. Two-fifty-four Parrish Street, four stories with six units and five parking spaces. So there are a number of four stories, and the idea was we're replacing the commercial structure to match the buildings on either side of ours.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think it's, it is consistent with the street height. I do have a question. The rear yard, so you mentioned the abutting property at two-seventeen is much, much deeper, which I can appreciate and see. Two-twenty-one, however, is much less deep than what you're proposing, so. And what is the rear, is there a two-twenty-one rear that abuts this property?
It's from the other street in the back. That building goes back all the way to the property line in the rear.
So how close is your rear to that building? It seems like they're almost touching, if I'm not, or you're extending beyond it, actually. If you look at the site plan, am I reading that correctly? Madam Ambassador, if you can go to the, yeah, that plane right there, so zoom in, so.
I don't know if Adam Glassman's on the call, he's the architect, he might be better suited to answer.
So you're overlapping the adjacent building to the rear, is what I can see in this. I just wanted to make sure, it just seems like it's extending.
Yeah, got it, that's a good, a good point, Mr. Robinson.
Is Adam Glassman on the call?
I don't have any other questions about the plans. I think they're fairly straightforward in terms of the proposal, but it feels a little bit deep and too dense.
I've just been led in to answer this question. The bill, if we're talking about the rear.
Hold on, hold on, please put your name and address on the record.
Adam Glassman, G C D Architects, two Worthington Street in Cambridge.
Did you hear the question?
I, I did. So the rear of our building is over fifteen feet from the rear lot line. Is that, was that the question you're asking?
No, Mr. Robinson, can you please?
No, the question I was asking is, there's a, there's a building to your rear left that you are actually encroaching and overlapping on. So there's basically zero lap, rear yard for them now, effectively. And then you're over, this sort of top little corner here is what I'm sort of.
I think we touch it, Mr. Robinson, like we're close, we don't overlap it. It's a staircase as a second of an egress on the back building.
Got it, okay. No other questions for me on the proposed.
So what, what is the distance then between your building and that, that building where there is the overlap?
It's, it's not a consistent dimension because the abutting buildings are not square. Probably starts at six inches apart at the front and tapers closer towards the rear, but at no point are we engaging the building.
No, what I'm, what I'm asking is that this building, that this, this view that's on the screen, we can see that it's Eric Gould as NF.
It's about five feet, Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's about five feet from, from, from wall to wall, okay. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, it, it just seems like this is packing an awful lot into a very, very tight space. On the, with respect to the parking, has anybody reviewed the maneuverability? It seems like even the four spaces is going to be very tough to manage. And then I also, just on a practical question, how do four spaces get divided among six units?
So these are, sorry, I'll answer that, Mr. Erlich. These are all eighteen by eight feet, foot spaces. There's about twenty-one feet across the middle for them to back out. It's typical of every building and new building in this immediate area. So we believe there, there is plenty of room for maneuverability. It is going to be a space that backs out, but you would drive in. It is a proposed rental building, so for those folks that would need them, we, you know, they would be offer.
So again, it's not like a space is assigned to a unit.
It, it could, it could be, no, no, it would be, what I meant to say is, some units may not require a space, a one-bedroom does not have a car. It would be, you know, first come in terms of.
So on this, on this drawing, this is, thank you for bringing this up, the drawing up. What is, what is that in the bottom left corner? Those looks like one, two, three, four, five, what are those units that are?
Those are bicycle spaces in the left.
Okay, it, I'm, you know, you are much more confident about maneuverability than I am with those in there, but anyway, okay.
Well, we were asked also by the community to add those too, so. And then we also, Mr. Erlich, increased our rear setback too, so, you know, we shifted the cars over to the side to make this work.
I hope, I hope, I hope none of the tenants have S U Bs.
Yep, so let's go and see if anybody's here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Venites, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has been in touch with the abutters since day one and has addressed all concerns. Maverick Central Neighborhood Association voted to support the project as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair and the board, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jacob from the Office of Counselor Liddy Edwards. Wanted to go on record, the counselor is in support of this project, and wanted to get that down for the record. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we hear from what is a support in the file.
I do have a raised hand, Alex Remar, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, yes, this is Alex Remar, and I live at two-nineteen Parrish Street. And I just wanted to let you know that I'm in support of the two-twenty-one Parrish Street construction.
So this is the official address for this, Mr. Drago, is two-nineteen?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, got it, okay, go ahead. Anybody else?
Oh, Minar, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minar Perez, with the carpenters. You didn't want to go on record as a supporter of this project.
We also have a hand raised by Bob, sent a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Bob, we can't hear you.
Oh, hello.
Yeah, go ahead, can you state your name and address?
Oh, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Apartment. And I would just like to address Mr. Erlich's concern. If this was a public parking location, then I would be a little bit concerned. But seeing that it's a private and it's a residential parking plan, I can, I can understand and accept the parking design as proposed. Thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hampton? Jeff Hampton, are you on?
I hate when the mute doesn't work. Thank you, Madam Chair. We recommend it to now without prejudice, and the reasoning why, and I know it looks like a broken tooth right now, but back in twenty-seventeen, we recommended to now without prejudice at two-twenty-one. Twenty-eighteen, we recommended to now without prejudice at two-seventeen. So our recommendations are based on consistency. We think that all three proposals were excessive. So that is the reasoning behind our third one here with the broken tooth parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a B P D, B P D A design review.
I'll second that motion. Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hampton, if you can figure out, if the B P D A can figure out a way to pull that building back so that in fact, that there is not, there, so that it eliminates that five feet between the existing building and this proposal.
Will do, thank you.
So that they have a clear view, the existing building continues to have a clear view.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, calling next case, B O A one-two-nine-nine-two-six-nine, Four Holden Road. Violation is Article sixty-two, Section eight, floor area ratio excessive.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Laurence Patino from Richard Lynn's office on Four Holden Row. Also with me is Casey Patton, the owner of the property, and Sean McCabe, the contractor. This is an existing two-family dwelling, and the plan is to extend unit one to the lower level. No change in the existing footprint. The, the space would be used as flex space with a new bathroom and just some storage. Unit one would be around thirteen hundred square feet inconsistent with unit two. As of right now, no work is proposed on unit two. This would be strictly work to unit one and unit two.
So tell us, tell us what flex space means, because as you know, we're concerned about bedrooms in the basement?
Absolutely.
So tell us about that.
So the idea would be to be able to have, with this work-from-home era, to be able to have a unit that is conducive to that, potentially an office space, or potentially put a larger family room down on that to just have some more access and some separate space for people. So at this point, we are not proposing any basement, excuse me, any bedrooms, and no new kitchen or anything like that.
Okay, and what's the floor to ceiling height in that space?
So the plan would be to achieve what a ceiling height of seven feet, six inches.
And how will utilities be kept separate from, accessed separately from the unit?
So the giant plan of that would be to have the utilities all within each of the units separately.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, it's a full walkout in the rear, so it's not sort of subgrade. There is some windows on the front. Currently, the electrical is shown in this flex space, so I do think that needs to be adjusted prior to construction. But no necessary, no questions about the scope, seems pretty straightforward.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kaitlin Stapleton, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. All abutters were fired, and our office held an abutters meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-second. The meeting had no attendees, and I have received no lines of support or opposition. So at this time, we would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
I do have a raised hand, a second, Casey?
Hi, yeah, this is, this is Casey Patton, the owner of the property. So just on the topic of abutters, I've been proactive with the.
So hold on, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I don't necessarily need to hear from you, but thank you for being on. Anybody else to speak and offer an opinion either in support or in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Did you see the B P D A recommendation with no building code relief?
I, I don't think the B P D A needs to be involved, they're only adding a couple increased window sizes. I, I think we can do approval with no building.
No building, okay, is there a second?
I'll second that, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, have a good day.
Calling next case, B O A one-two-eight-five-one-four-five, seventy-seven forty-five Atlantic Ave. Violation to Article forty-four, Section seven, specific design requirements due to display window area regulations. Article forty-four, Section six, roof additions and leather district due to mechanical equipment and screening. Article thirty-two, Section four, G card applicability. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Whittier for Oxford Properties with the business address of one-twenty-five Summer Street, Boston, Mass. I'm also joined by a few of my Oxford colleagues, as well as John Radigan, our counsel from D L A Piper, and Chris Leary, the design principal from Jacobs. Madam Chair, I'm happy to provide a quick background on the proposed change of occupancy or jump directly to the variances, whichever the board prefers.
Yes, please tell us, is this speculative R and D, or is this, do you have a tenant in place?
This is indeed speculative. The building was previously leased to WeWork, which was a coworking provider. They defaulted on their lease in twenty-twenty-one and left the building, leaving the building about seventy-five percent vacant. The decision was made to, in order to stabilize the building quickly and as rapidly as possible, to add the ability to have additional uses, namely life signs, R and D, to the building for the future.
And are there any specifics? Is, is there a way that the building needs to be adjusted to accommodate this R and D use? Stacks or ventilation or anything like that?
Yes, Madam Chair. The building mechanical systems are being completely overhauled within this building. So all of the infrastructure, the plumbing, the electrical, and the H V A C systems are being overhauled. What we're doing, which is a little bit different than maybe some of the other conversions that the board has seen, is we are actually submerging the majority of this equipment within the eleventh floor by repurposing what was previously tenant office space. And that was really done out of the necessity to limit any equipment that needed to be located on the rooftop. Our goal with this building has always been to effectuate the conversion with as minimal impact as possible to the surrounding neighborhood.
So, so if it's on the eleventh floor, so is the eleventh floor the top floor?
It is the top, previously occupiable floor.
Okay, okay, got it. And is it venting out, is it venting out towards any residential uses?
So the exhaust equipment is located in the middle of the rooftop in the open-air penthouse. It is surrounded by some residential uses, but I will just note that the rooftop of this building is at approximately a hundred and fifty feet. The surrounding leather district datum, which is very consistent, is around a hundred feet. So there is a great degree of separation from the surrounding buildings and the proposed rooftop equipment.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, I did review all two-hundred-and-ninety-three of them, so thank you for sending them all in. They are adding. They are adding additional equipment. They are also, it appears, adding screening on the 11th floor that will, I think, help. Currently, it's not screened, I believe. So I just want to confirm that's the case. But the stacks do rise up about 17 feet, but they are pulled in from the edge. So I think it's fairly minimal in terms of the visual change on the outside. And no real questions on the proposed scope of the interior fit out.
Any questions from the board? Christian, do you want to go on the record?
Christian Simonelli, Boston Row Water Trust. And we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Then we have them here on the file.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flink's office. The counselor would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sorry. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Chulaind Huang from the Office of Neighborhood Services. This project received BPDA board approval on February 2nd. February 10th. They received no letters of opposition. This project received a letter of support from the IAG. Oxford has accepted the two asks in the letter for restricting lab use and keeping itself street entrances active going forward. Those commitments are being memorialized in the cooperation agreement and that is in the process of finalizing, finalizing with the BPDA legal department. There are numerous letters of support from residents and business. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Luigi Natale from Representative Aaron Michaelitz's office, and he is in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Paul Simonian. I'm in 111 Beach Street. And one question I have is this, this construction closed the very key parking garage on April 1st for the entire...
Hold on, I, I just, I just, this time for questions have come and gone. I just need to know whether you're in support or in opposition and if you have either a tentative support or tentative opposition.
I'll reserve my comments then. Thank you. I'm in support though.
Thank you.
Minor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, mine up a raise representing hundreds of carpenters delivering work in City of Boston. Want to go on record and support?
And I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
I just, off the applicant, I have a question for you. What's the difference between R and D and lab? I'm assuming lab is no production, R and D is just research?
Yes, there will be no production in this building, just research.
Okay, good. Just need to confirm that. Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, do you want a separate motion on G card?
Um, no. I think I could...
Then I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling next case, BOA 1289823, 5, 358 to 360 Athens Street. Violation to Article 68, Section 8, rear yard insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, building height excessive in feet. Name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on this in the next panel discussion.
Costa is recusing. Mr. Rogiro, I think it's, it's a, it's attached to the, to the next case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yep, sorry. And then calling, calling companion case, BOA 1289831, 358 to 360 Athens Street. Violation, that was building code. Violation 9th Edition 780 CMR stairways roof access, where a stairway is provided to a roof access, access should be provided through a penthouse complying with Section 1510-2.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Barry from the LARVSS. Johnny Barry located at 1156 Dorchester Ave.
Okay, Mr. Barry, I should inform you that we started off with a, with a six-member board. With the recusal, we are down to a five-member board. So you, so to, 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 you, you basically need all five of us in support of this proposal for it to carry. So you do have the opportunity to ask for an administrative deferral. And if you decide to proceed, if you can address the building code first.
Certainly. We do wish to proceed, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Regarding the building code violation that is in the refusal letter, that was actually a decision by the design team, rather than creating a headhouse on the top of the structure to access the two individual roof decks for each unit. Instead, there was a decision to put in the roof hatches, which seemed to be something that the board had been kind of advising clients to try to do just for the sake of it's not as such...
Okay.
...an impact on the community.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant building code, please.
I'll second Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can you now please get to the meat of the matter here on the, on the relief?
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So there are two violations here. The two violations are that the building height is excessive in feet. The plans actually show that the roof deck is actually at 39'4" at the base of the roof deck. But we did know that the rear yard insufficiency, that was a pre-existing non-conformance that was going to be triggered by filing this proposal. So...
So tell us, tell us about the dimensions of the roof deck and tell us if they are visible from the street.
So that was actually one of the points I was going to get to, Madam Chair. There are good renditions of the size of the roof deck that are located on A1.5 right there on the proposal. We put in a couple of sun chairs just to show kind of what the size of this roof deck actually would appear in reality. And as far as visibility from the...
So I'm sorry, so the dimensions are 10...
So the dimensions of the roof deck are the width is 15'7". That was actually minimized after our butters meeting due to concerns from the community about the size of the roof deck. So we did make the width smaller by about roughly 6 feet. And the length of the roof deck is... I apologize, I spoke incorrectly. The width of each individual roof deck stayed at 10'2". The depth of the roof deck was minimized from 21.5 feet to 15 point, 15'7". And that was after there was in a butters meeting where some community members voiced some concerns. We also provided some renditions to show the lack of visibility from the street, which is located on A5.0.
Okay.
And one other item I would like to highlight to the board is if you actually view this site as it sits within the neighborhood, there's actually parking lots located almost on all three sides of the building. Rockland Trust has a parking lot behind the building.
Okay, hold on, hold on. We'll just say that, that's for now.
Okay.
Are you proposing a wall barrier between the two units? Between the two decks?
Yes.
And tell us about the height of that?
Actually, I apologize. I spoke incorrectly. There, there is not going to be a wall barrier between the roof decks. I think that was just being shown to just show that there's going to be some, I don't... I believe the architect is actually on the call. It's Nick Landry.
Okay. In the meantime, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. I think, you know, the Athens Street is obviously a tight street and with the two driveway access points. I'm not sure exactly about the maneuverability into the units, but the plans are pretty straightforward. And it doesn't appear there's a wall shown except for in that one accent, accent view, so.
And I believe that was just to give a rendition showing that each individual unit owner would have access to just one half of that roof deck. It is not a community roof deck that either unit can access the others. It will be a private roof deck utilized by each unit.
When was this building built? Sorry, when was this building built and did it come to this board? And were there any restrictions at that time about a roof deck?
I know that this was brought before the board some time ago. I'm not exactly sure when. I believe it was in 2014. And then it was purchased by my client. He bought it in October of 2021. He is in the process right now of beginning construction. When he purchased it, the actual size of the lot is approximately 1,174 square feet. So it's a very small parcel. And the idea after he purchased it was to try to create some type of outdoor space for the owners. With everything that we know that's going on right now, although it is subsiding, we were trying to give some way for the owners to have some outdoor space other than, any porch would go beyond the property line, Madam Chair.
So basically, this construction is, is property line to property line. It provides a blank access to the street with the two garages. Tom, any information on any restrictions that were put when this building was, was approved?
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Tom. I'm looking at them right now. We got a few decisions on this one. There was a BFA as well, apparently. The one from 2015 has BPDA design review.
What I want to make sure is that if the neighborhood was in opposition at that time to roof deck and therefore it was eliminated from the plans, that we are not kind of back-dooring it now by approving a roof deck.
So, Madam Chair, basically, we got a few decisions on the property, but none of them are, you know, there's no prohibition that the board put on roof decks previously.
Okay. Uh, how, I'm, I'm starting...
Madam Chair, in the, in the folder we have, in the file, we have letters of support and letters of opposition.
Okay, let's just find out. I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson, did I ask you how the plans were?
Yes, plans are fine.
Any questions from the board? Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Arana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We have received opposition both from a butters and from the community groups based on the roof deck, being on a building they said would not be putting roof decks on in the building, as well as concerns about the project. At this time, we would like to defer to the board's judgment on this matter.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flink's office. The counselor would like to go on recording opposition to this proposal. We have received numerous opposition letter and emails from direct abutters in this area who are not happy with the proposed roof decks. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the boards, Maeve Bennett speaking on behalf of Counselor Flaherty. The counselor would like to say with the district counselor and neighborhood and go on record opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, so...
Madam Chair, could I just address one thing very quickly? There are two letters of support in the file from the two direct abutters to this property. There were members at the butters meeting that claimed that the direct abutters were not.
Hold on, hold on, please. So given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, it's been denied.
Calling next, members of the board. Calling next case, BOA 1286347, 16 Bowfield Street. Violation to Article 65, Section 8, forbidden two-family in a one-family sub-district. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking requirements. Location, parking located within required front yard, not allowed. Name and address for the record. Is this a...
Mr. Christopher? Is, Mr. Christopher, are you on?
Making him a panelist now.
Okay. Is this a companion case to the Dorchester Ave one?
That's what I was going to ask. I don't, I can't tell.
Yep, it sounds like it is.
No, they're not even close together. Yeah, they're nowhere near, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, got it, okay. Mr. Christopher, can you please put your name and address on the record?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher. One of the principals of 686 Architects with the business address of 1156 Dorchester Ave in Napontet. I'm here today on behalf of Jennifer Shawn Pugslay. They're the owners of 16 Bowfield Street. What you can see here is a corner lot on Bowfield, which wraps around Bowfield and Granite Ave. The proposal is to construct a small rear addition combining the existing lots, creating free off-street parking spaces. This proposal is being constructed out of medical necessity. Shawn's parents are aging and this construction will allow them to stay in, with their families and not end up in a nursing home. As a result of this project, we have some zoning violations. We carried out, we held in a butters meeting. The project was well-received and supported by...
Mr. Christopher, can, you know, we, I'm sure, I'm, can you please explain to us the project? We will hear about the process from the mayor's office. Tell us about the project itself, okay?
Sure. The proposal is to construct a rear addition to the existing single-family, creating a new unit. The addition will be approximately 20 by 18. On the first floor, it will have a kitchen with a small living area, a bedroom for the Pugslay's parents. And then on the second floor, we would house a master bedroom for Shawn and Jennifer.
Okay, so for this proposed unit, that's, that's going to be for, for the elders, is it handicapped accessible or proposed to be handicapped accessible?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Tell us how?
They'll be able to come into the unit at grade. We'll have an oversized at-grade shower and the living and bedroom are all at grade.
Okay, and tell us about the parking?
We have three parking spaces. We are showing one parking space in close proximity to the new front door, Madam Chair. Our intent there is that easy access in and out for medical appointments and such. But there will be additional room on the site. If you go back to the site use plan, you can see here, we're proposing one, two, three, with, you can't see me, but the, the number one parking space would be so that they could pull in and park adjacent to the front door. And then the balance of the site towards granite remains open.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No question on the proposed scope. I think the, just the question may be a little bit, it's showing a fairly large curb cut. I know they're moving it, but I think probably we should limit the size. It's showing, it's called out as 14 feet clear, but it seems excessive for a residential. But other than that, no, no real questions on the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting for the proposal on November 2nd. We heard support from neighbors and Cedar Grove Civic Association to allow the applicant's elderly parents to live next door. At this time, we would like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support of the project.
No, Bob D'Amico had his hand raised.
Yes, hi, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. The three spaces don't work very well. Maneuverability with the two spaces across from one another would be very difficult. And I'd like to recommend that the space be reduced from three to two in order to provide safe maneuverability. Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff. Thank you, Jeff Hampton, senior planning zoning for the BPDA. Absent a formal vote, the BPDA would like to go on record in support of this proposal.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Rogiro, were there letters of support and opposition? Because I do recall seeing some letters in, in, I do recall seeing some letters. Because I do recall seeing some letters in, in, I do recall seeing some letters.
I just see an email from Bob, and that's it. So I like to make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Looking.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do we need design review or?
Yeah, I think design review for the curb cut in the site plan would be good. I think just.
Would that be just BTD for the curb cut?
Um, we, we just-
I don't think we need to see it, to be honest with you.
Okay, that's fine. Or just reduce the curb cut to a 10-foot curb cut.
Okay, so Mr. D'Amico, you got that? Okay, so who made the motion? Do you accept these?
Yeah, yep, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Calling next case. I'm calling next case BOA 1141565, 1809 to 1813 B Dorchester Ave. Violations of 65, Section 8, Use Regulation, general business, retail business. Article 65, Section 42.2, conformity with an existing billing line, billing alignment. Article 65, Section 9, additional lot area insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, floor area, floor area ratio excessive. Article 65, Section 9, building height excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, building height excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9, unusable open space insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, side yard insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, rear yard insufficient. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking and loading requirement. Article 65, Section 42.3, traffic visibility across corner. Article 65, Section 38, specific design requirements. Name and address for the-
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Mark Kennedy, who owns the building at 1809 1813 Dorchester Avenue, where he has had his commercial painting business for many years. The building is currently used for storage of equipment and materials. Project architects are 686 Architects, and James Christopher is here this morning. This is an Article 80 small project which has been approved by the ERA Board of Directors. The project site consists of 5,521 square feet at the corner of Dorchester Avenue and Banton Street, which is a dead-end street. The proposed project is to demolish the existing single-story concrete block building and to construct a new five-story building containing 26 residential apartment units, including four IDP units. There will be nine one-bedroom units ranging from 626 to 645 square feet and 17 two-bedroom units, with most being between 800 and 900 square feet, and two being 1,100-plus square feet. The site is within a multifamily residential local service zoning sub-district under Article 65. In addition to off-street parking, there are violations cited for insufficient lot area for the number of dwelling units being proposed.
Hold on, Mr. Maranci, tell us what the parking is that is being provided for these 26 units.
There's no parking. The site is actually within a five-minute walking distance to Ashmont MBTA Station, making this a true TOD project. Because of this walkability factor and in order to activate the ground floor of the building, the proposed project doesn't include accessory off-street parking. Instead of a ground floor garage, the building will include approximately 2,200 square feet of retail space at grade, as well as numerous building amenities. We in fact looked originally at having parking in this building, but because of the shallow depth of the lot and because of the need to have a lobby, retail space to activate the ground floor, bicycle storage, mail and package room, elevator core, utility room, et cetera, at the ground floor level, there would have been only room for parking spaces.
Okay, so let's, let's get to, you know, violations that I'm, that we're concerned about is conformity with building alignment.
Right, in addition.
Hold on, traffic visibility across the corner. And context, how does this fit in with what's in, in proximity?
Of course. As I said, in addition, of course, there's a violation for insufficient off-street parking. There are also violations for insufficient lot area for the size of the, for the size of the lot and the numbered units for FAR. This is a proposed 3.4 FAR. There's a building height violation. This building would be 48 feet to the roof of the fourth story, but there's a recessed fifth story. That fifth-story roof would be 59 feet. There are also violations for insufficient usable open space, front, side, and rear yard setbacks. Although with respect to the front and side setbacks, I need to point out that this is a corner lot. Also, this is an MFR LS sub-district where street wall continuity is actually a code requirement. So this is a, essentially a site with two modules, both along Dorchester Avenue and along Banton Street. This is also relevant with respect to the traffic visibility across corner. Banton Street is a very little-use street. It's a short street. It is a dead-end street. There is a commercial use behind the building, and that's about it. So the BPDA opted for an option to create a relatively strong street edge. There is some degree of setback on both Banton and Dorchester Avenue at the corner. This is, is felt is adequate for the amount of, or the lack of traffic, traffic volume on Banton Street.
Okay, so let's just ask a couple more questions. No roof decks? How is open space being provided?
There are no roof decks. The, the fifth floor of plan consists of two units, which are well set back from the, from the center of the, of the roof. I believe if we scroll back in the plan set, that would be, that would be visible. And there is a, in the, the rear of the site, it isn't a uniform setback. There's a greater setback on the right rear of the site, which is programmed open space for the building. James, James Christopher is the architect. James could, actually, yes, we keep scrolling back up to the first floor level.
Okay, hold on. Let me find out. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are, are fine. I do have a question. I'm trying to understand. So the fifth floor is set back. I'm seeing four units in my plans. Is there a?
Mr. Robinson, I think this is an older iteration of the plans. The, the most current set has two units on the top floor.
Two units on the top. And then, okay, wait, is the, is the massing the same? Because I'm thinking here-
Yes, the, the siding and massing of the building remained. We, I don't know what happened here, but this, this, the, the, essentially, the, the penthouse has moved into the middle of the building more. There's two units, but the end wall setback from the front of Dorchester Ave to the front wall is the same, but the, the building has moved in and we've eliminated two units.
Okay, so, uh, because there's no doors shown to the decks. Are those occupiable decks or are they just outdoor space?
Yeah, no, they, they weren't occupiable. This, as I mentioned, Eric, this, Mr. Robinson, this, this iteration has changed.
Yeah.
So the, this, the top floor is, is different now.
All right, and my other question-
And that's per the, the, per the BPDA approved drawings.
The other question I'm just trying to, and maybe I should ask Mr. Hampton. The elevations don't show the fifth floor drawn. Is this, like, see, there, there's a floor that's very lightly lined in there.
It's ghosted here, yes.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, Mr. Robinson, that it's ghosted.
Well, which would be nice if it wasn't, you know, maybe that's-
If it wasn't ghosted?
Yeah.
The, the, this is-
Do the neighbors know it's ghosted or do they know it's there?
They know, yes. No, the, the neighbors know it's there. The, there, there's a, a more recent set of drawings that we shared. I, I don't know what happened here, but it has renderings and, and such of the current building.
James, this is George Maranci. James, I know that we received an updated-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Maranci. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or, go ahead, Mr. Righiro?
Yeah, I just got a question, Eric. Are we comfortable moving forward not having the updated plans or?
Well, I, I get my question, which wasn't very clear, obviously, to Mr. Hampton, like, if this went through Article 80, small project, there should be, you know, quite a bit more information associated with this project.
Yeah, like, like Mr. Christopher said, I don't know what happened with the transmittal over to the ZBA, but I can assure you that we have done these plans and, you know, I, I don't think it's worth deferring. We're very comfortable with this.
So just, just to make sure we all understand, it's a five-story, 26-unit mixed-use building with two commercial spaces totaling 2,200 square feet, and there are four IDP units now with no parking. High-level summary, right?
It's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal has been in the community process for the last two and a half years. Our office heard consistent opposition from abutters regarding its heightened density with far too few parking spots. We received a letter of opposition from St. Mark's Area Civic Association with these concerns. We also received a letter of support from Greater Ashmont Main Street, praising the transformation of a light industrial parcel into active streetscape and much-needed housing. Of course, the BPDA has also voted to approve the project. At this time, we would like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
So, um, please, um, so I, from the community point of view, it was a mixed bag. Is that what you're reporting, George?
I would say, um, with abutters, it's been pretty consistent in terms of opposition. And then with Main Street, that's where the support comes in.
With Main Street, okay.
Madam Chair, we have a fair amount of letters of opposition.
Okay.
We have a letter of support from Main Street.
Okay, so let's go ahead. Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council, Worrell's office. We would like to go on record in opposition citing some of the comments that the mayor's office reported, the, the height, the lack of parking, and the opposition from direct abutters.
Have a few raised hands. Doug, start with Sydney. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Sydney Miller. I live at 14 Edwin Street. I'm an abutter. I live like five doors up from Dorchester Avenue. This is a crazy proposal. At five stories, it's almost double the height of the average. Most, most buildings in the area are one to three stories high, and there's no parking provided at all. Where do we think the estimated 40 vehicles are likely to park? I'll tell you where they're gonna park. They're gonna park.
Hold on, hold on. So you're, you're in opposition because of density and lack of parking?
Correct, and height excessively also.
Okay, good. Any, anybody else?
Okay, Doug and Jim, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, this is Douglas Shaheen. I'm at 21 Chevres Road, Dorchester, which is 700 feet from the project. But it is Michael Foran who will be speaking. He is here with me. He didn't have a computer, so he's here at my house. This is Michael Foran.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Michael Foran. I'm Vice President of the St. Mark's Civic Association and Chair of the St. Mark's Development Committee. I live on the next block over, about 500 feet from this proposal. I am in strong opposition to this proposal. This proposal came before the St. Mark's Civic Association meeting last Tuesday, a well-attended meeting. After the presentation, there was a discussion. No one spoke in favor of this proposal, and when the vote was taken, only one person voted in favor. All of them voted against.
Thank you. Any, please, everybody who's spoken, put your hands down.
Okay, and Hayat, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Good morning. I'm talking on behalf of my husband, Joseph Hunt, and I. We are living in 59 Edwin Street. And I want to state very strongly our opposition to this project. It's crazy to be having a place that should have 41 spaces and has zero. And as other people have spoken about the parking situation, we are nearly 80 years old. We're literally afraid to leave our house at this time because walking is hazardous in the winter, and we don't dare drive anywhere because you can't find parking anywhere near our home.
Okay, thank you.
One additional thing that I must say is that this development is being supported or presented as a transit-oriented development or TOD. And I'd like to say that is a false premise because TOD cannot start with developments that are called TOD just because they don't provide parking. TOD has to start by building an environment that does not need cars.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Masseter, anybody else?
Yes, Vance Morgan, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi. My name is Vance Morgan. I live at 19 Edwin Street. I strongly oppose this proposition. Certainly, the parking is a huge issue. All those people within the building will be looking for parking on a street that's already congested and has parking issues.
Thank you, thank you.
Also, also the, the amount of units and it being a five-story unit, I object to that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one additional raise hand, Jean. Just an request to un-mute you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Desaro. I'm the Executive Director of Greater Ashmont Main Streets. For, we did submit a letter of support in, in, in support of the project because of its focus on commercial revitalization and having space on the first floor as well as the push towards being transit-centric. So, thank you. Our full comments are in our letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Masseter, are we good? Mr. Masseter, can you, can you mute everybody, please? Okay, um, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
I'll second the, I'll second the motion, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Who's opposed?
Uh, Mark Earle, Mark Earle.
And Sher, and Sheri.
Sheri, so there's two oppositions. Given that we have a six-member board, it's been denied.
Madam Chair, would you want to have a, is there, the board will have another vote on a denial without prejudice or?
No, it's been denied. Thank you. Because that is, that is how, what happens at this, when this happens. Because I think denial without prejudice means that this board is uninterested in seeing a five-story, 26-unit mixed-use building. But, but we, we can see something different when, within that period of time. So can we move to the, Mr. Righiro?
It's, it's after 10:30. I'd like to call for the 10:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30?
And just, just let me remind everybody, this is a six-member board, and for approval, you need five members in support. So if you need an administrative deferral, please let us know.
Yes, one, I have two, Mr. Righiro. I have 167 Maverick Street is the first.
Calling case BOA 1268636, 167 Maverick Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with an address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking a deferral. We did receive a letter from Parks Department on Friday with a number of asks and concerns, so we want to work with them and the Greenway Council to address some of those issues.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna recuse, I'm gonna recuse and abstain on this vote.
I'd like to make a motion for, uh, oh.
I'll second the motion, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Drago, how much, how much time do you need?
Um, Mr. Righiro, please find a date when Mr. Mr. Ligris is not sitting.
I, I don't have that in. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know. I mean, okay, I, I don't know the answer to that question. Jeff, how long do you need?
Relatively quick.
Okay.
The board.
You want, you want April 26th or May 10th?
No, 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 let's, let's go into May.
May 10th.
May 10th.
May 10th, okay.
Costa is off on May 10th.
Costa is not here on May 10th. That worked.
Excellent, excellent. So we'll see, you had May 10th at 11:30.
I have another one, too, Mr. Righiro.
Go ahead.
Twenty, twenty Hinkley Street, Board thirteen.
Uh, calling case BOA one-two-five-eight-six-three-eight, twenty Hinkley Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with an address of eleven Beacon Street. Uh, we are seeking an administrative deferral. We submitted updated plans, and they need to be finalized, reviewed, and we believe advertised for new violation.
Uh, May tenth as well?
Perfect.
Make a motion for the deferral.
Is there a second?
Second, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Any opposed? A date, please?
May tenth.
May tenth at eleven-thirty.
Uh, going back to the last case of nine-thirty, uh, are there any more deferrals or withdrawals at ten-thirty? Okay, going back to the last nine-thirty case, BOA one-two-eight-two-four-nine-five, two-twenty-five South Hampton Street. Uh, violation of Article ninety, section seven, conditional cannabis establishment. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, Business Assistant, Wood Dobson Row. With me today are Mario Signori and Dwayne Osborne, who are the owners and operators of, um, Green Flash LLC. And our security consultant is Paul Zambia, who is also on the call. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking to change the legal article to include, uh, cannabis delivery service and wholesale distribution of cannabis products. Madam Chair, the zoning sub-district is the New Market Industrial Commercial Neighborhood District, and we are seeking a conditional use permit, um, to allow for that. Um, I will allow, um, Mario and, um, Dwayne to answer any questions that you may have regarding the operations.
Counselor, can you please tell us, um, if this is in proximity of a school or in proximity of another establishment?
No, it is not. We, we don't have any buffer zone conflicts, Madam Chair.
Even, uh, with any proposed, um, uses of, uh, uh, let's see, school uses being proposed for the neighborhood?
Not, not at all yet.
Okay, excellent. Okay, um, can you please tell us then, um, um, Mr. Signori and, and the T-
Mr. Osborne.
Is, can you please tell us about, um, how this is going to work? How many people you intend to hire? What's the, 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 the breakdown of wholesale, um, and delivery? And will there be any, what, what are the hours of operation? Things like that that we need to know to understand, um, the, how this is going to work?
Absolutely, uh, I'd, I'd love to. So this is a wholesale delivery operation. There'll be absolutely no public component to this. There'll be no registers, no customers, or any people from the public coming to this facility at any time. There will be no signage, no markings, no symbols on any of our buildings or our delivery vehicles. Our delivery vehicles will be nondescript passenger cars customized for security with GPS tracking and cameras and a secure lockbox in them. They'll look just like most of the other cars on the road in the city. Their designs blend in, uh, as I said, nondescript. Uh, products will be delivered to the building wholesale in a secure carport, uh, that's taking up an area where there's two existing lanes for large trucks to make deliveries at a loading dock. Products will then come in through the secure carport. They will go into a Sallyport that goes into a secured material lift that goes straight from the loading dock right up to our vault on the third floor. So at no time will the public have any access to products or during loading, unloading, or delivery. Uh, we initially believe we'll have somewhere between five to six vehicles. We'll have secure parking for six vehicles plus off-site parking for another ten employees. But we really plan on only having four or five other employees on site at the time. Uh, it's on the third floor. It's secure. We have an extensive security plan with four secure points of entry to get into the building. Um, and then once you're into the third floor after four security points, there's two secure walls to get to our vault of the product. It's basically a fortress in the sky, so it's off the street, it's out of the way. No one's gonna know we're there except for, uh, employees and people making deliveries.
So, um, so, so, um, just to confirm for the record, um, who will you be delivering to? Will you be delivering to other businesses? Or will you be delivering to, uh, to homes?
I'll take this one.
Uh, we'll be delivering directly to homes.
Okay.
And just, just to clarify that, too, we're not allowed to deliver to any government housing or dorms. Uh, only private residences where, uh, after people have gone online and filled out forms and shown, uh, their identification to prove that they're twenty-one years old age, and we see that they're, uh, residents that we're legally allowed to deliver to, will we then go with two drivers in each vehicle who are both on camera and each have body cameras on them. They will on-camera check the ID of the customer to make sure that's who it is, they are legally of age and allowed to buy the products. At that point, we will get back in the car and leave.
So you know, um, a lot of students do live in private residences. Um, so you may not be delivering to dorms, but you may be delivering to, um, to students. Uh, is there any policy on that?
If they're, if a student is twenty-one years of age and they're legally allowed to buy marijuana, and they live in a private residence, they're, they're allowed to receive delivered cannabis. But if they're underage, they would not be allowed to.
Okay, and tell us about your hiring practices for your drivers?
Sure, do you wanna talk about the board? All right, so we have a pretty extensive hiring process. We're working with a nonprofit group here in Boston called Big Hope Project. We'll be working with them to help people who have queries, who may have had a small fine for possession of a small amount of marijuana that's prevented them from getting working jobs with, uh, you know, getting skilled jobs where they can make money and have livable wages. So we're working with them to help expunge records and take people with queries with, uh, priority for people, for people from the neighborhood, preferably from marginalized areas of Boston. Uh, we're within walking distance to nine different buses and shuttles. Uh, we're right next to two commuter rails and the Red Line. So people who don't have vehicles can easily walk or take a bus, shuttle, or train, or commuter rail to our location. Um, so we're opening it up also to ADA. Uh, we have a lot of opportunities for people from the city that have queries, uh, preferably from marginalized areas, people who've been affected by the war on drugs.
So a couple, couple of, uh, couple of questions for you. Who, did you say Big Hope? Who is Big Hope?
Big Hope is a five-oh-one C here in Boston. Uh, they formed to help people who have queries and have expungible criminal records. They're also looking to help people, uh, get jobs with livable wages, uh, people who've been in prison or, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. How are the plans, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, hmm, pretty straightforward, and they appear to be, as the proponents, uh, indicating there is, seems to be a secure area with a, a dedicated, sort of dumb elevator, uh, to move up, uh, the, the product from the loading dock, so no real questions on the proposed layout.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I have two questions. Um, what is the current use of the space?
Uh, it's located in an industrial building. Uh, it was used for storage and for heavy equipment like, uh, gym equipment. There's a lot of weights. Uh, they use the, the prior tenants use it as basically a fitness gym. So there's a lot of big, heavy equipment and weight equipment and cardio equipment up there now.
Okay, and my second question is, uh, the drivers that you intend to hire, will they be employees of the organization or, or as, hiring, hiring them as independent contractors?
All, all employees, yeah.
Yeah, they'd be employees of, uh, of Green Flash Delivery.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jason Gamp from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was held for this proposal on December twentieth in which they answered all the questions and concerns of the community. There was a lot of support on the meeting. Um, a lot of folks which, who are here today to testify, so I will speak specifically for them. The only issue that was raised, the applicant team, was the use of the elevator by another proponent in the building. Um, they just wanted to clarify on how folks would be able to access the third floor and how they would be able to get onto the second floor as well. But we will be deferring to the expertise of the board on this matter. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckard, City Councilor Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Can I hear from Ben Murphy, please?
Sure, uh, second. Uh, Ben, I sent a request on you. Go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead, Ben.
Hi, my name's Ben Murphy from the New Market Business Improvement District. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Green Flash and its owners have been excellent neighbors and community partners since long before this proposal and have outdone themselves with their community engagement this time. So for that reason, I would like to go on record as strongly in support of their proposal. Thank you.
So Ben, I have, I have not heard of Big Hope. Who is Big Hope?
Uh, um, I personally am not familiar with, uh, Big Hope, um, but we have a lot of faith in Green Flash's, uh, ability to vet their partners and, and to choose, um, suitable partners for this endeavor.
Thank you. So, uh, and everybody who's spoken, please put your hands down, and I'd like to hear from four more people. Ms. Ambassador?
Sure, yep, I'll go with, uh, Black Market Nubian. Um, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Kai Grant. Um, address twenty-one thirty-six Washington Street. I am a longtime Roxbury resident. I'm a Nubian Square business owner and the founder of John Elliott Square Neighborhood Association here in support of Green Flash's project. Dwayne Osborne and Mario Signori have a project that's gonna help to bring wealth, creation opportunities uh, for equity applicants and jobs for Roxbury residents who have been personally affected. Hearing support.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Ambassador?
Okay, yep, I have Alice. Call her, can you state your name and address for the record, please, Alice? I sent a request on you. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Can we state your name and address for the record?
Alice Signori, thirty-five Wilson, Lincoln, Needham. I am owner of two-twenty-five South Hampton. And I have been watching and observing.
Um, ma'am, thank you. I'd like to hear from in a Butter.
Okay. All right, Deborah, um, Tenon? I sent a request on you. Are you a director Butter?
Uh, no, I'm actually here to, uh, support Green Flash Delivery.
Okay, go ahead. Put your name and address on the record.
Uh, it's Deborah Tenon and, um, Jamaica Plain, Massachusetts. And again, I'm here to, uh, calling to support Green Line Flash Delivery.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, I'd like everybody, uh, the, the last person, a couple of people, I'd like to have hands raised only if you are a director Butter or work, or really close in proximity to this proposal. Otherwise, please put your hand down. Okay, Ms. Ambassador, a couple more people, please, and that's it.
All right, Steven, I sent a request to unmute you. You're a director Butter? Okay, I'll go to forward Will. Will Justice, you've been unmuted. I sent a request on you. I'm sorry. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
All right, so this is Bill Justice, and, um, that's not how this policy goes. Like, um, anybody can speak on this, and I wanna support Green Flash Delivery. You can't make up your rules the way you want to.
Okay, you might have missed our preamble, but you know, we do want to hear from a Butters who will be, um, impacted, um, but I'm assuming you're in support, then?
Of course, I am in support. I'm in support of Green Flash Delivery.
Thank you. Okay, um, I think we've covered, uh, quite a number of people, so let's, uh, move to a decision.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, is this with our usual proviso to this applicant only?
So it's the applicant only.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna go to the first case at ten thirty, but before I do that, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at ten thirty?
Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, I do have, uh, one, uh, that's awesome, uh, two hundred High Street.
Uh, case BOA one-two-two-four-one-nine-four-two-hundred-high, High Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Uh, this is Mike Ross, Attorney at Prince Loubelle. Uh, we are due to the six-member board requesting an administrative deferral.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Any opposed? A date, please?
April twenty-sixth, Counselor?
Uh, that would be great, Mr. Secretary.
Yep.
Are we, are, are we expecting a full board, then?
Second. Unfortunately, we're back. I'm not sure whether Costa is gonna be here on that day or not.
Costa, you gonna be here?
Uh, I'll make the check. Hold on a second.
April twenty-sixth.
I've got his email. I just can't find it in my giant collection of emails. There you go. He is not gonna be here on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Or the tenth, or June, so we can.
May twenty, May twenty-fourth, looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
All right, Counselor?
Got it. Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the board.
Okay, calling first case of ten thirty, BOA one-two-eight-three-two-two-eight-two-twenty-seven-two-thirty-seven, Hamilton Street. Uh, violation of Article seven, section four, other protective conditions. It's to remove a, removal of proviso. Name and address for the record. Anyone on for Hamel Properties?
We move on to the next project?
Okay. Uh, calling next case, BOA one-three-zero-zero.
Uh, calling next case, BOA one-three-zero-zero.
That was.
I do see a, a raised hand here, uh, John Hamel.
That was, okay.
One second, uh. John, uh, Jessica, either of you?
Hi, I'm sorry, can you, hey, uh, can you hear me now? Hi, I'm sorry, can you, hey, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
There's a little bit of an echo. I'm not sure if, um, you have that as well.
We can hear you.
Can you hear a little bit of that?
Hi, are you here for that? Two-twenty-seven Hamilton?
Yes, so this is John Hamel, uh, with Hamel Properties. I think someone else might have, uh, a speaker on, so I'm hearing an echo, so that's better, thank you. Uh, John Hamel with, uh, Hamel Properties. Uh, my address is, uh, ten Lookout Terrace, Lynnfield, Massachusetts. Um, so I'm, uh, here requesting, uh, I'm the property, property owner. Uh, not, not too familiar with the process, so if you could be out with me and, uh-
Will you, will you please tell us what this business is that's leaving and what's being proposed?
Yes, thank you.
And their hours of, uh, operation for takeout?
Yes, so-
And if they, and if they understand specifically what takeout means in the city of Boston?
Yes, so, um, uh, and, and I do believe, uh, the operator, uh, may be on as well to speak to it, but I, I think I, I can as well. So this space, uh, am, am I able to share my screen or, or I could shoot?
No.
No, um-
No, okay, that's, that's fine. That, uh, so, um, uh, so this, uh, property, uh, two-twenty-seven Hamilton Street has a, um, uh, uh, two restaurants on the location. The second restaurant is a small takeout restaurant. It previously was Cobblestone's Restaurant. Unfortunately, it, uh, went out of business, um, uh, at the beginning of, of COVID, uh, casualty of, of, uh-
So what, what is the new, what is the new proposed restaurant?
And the new proposed restaurant similarly is a, a, a small takeout restaurant, uh, called Sauce Day. Uh, it's a Cambodian, uh, style, uh, sandwich shop. Um, and, um, its hours of operations are, um, nine AM to eleven, uh, uh, PM. Um, and, uh, it's not too dissimilar, not dissimilar to, to the previous, uh, um, uh, operations in terms of, uh, uh-
And again, and again, what is the name of the restaurant?
It's spelled S-U-A-S-D-A-Y. It's spelled S-U-A-S-D-A-Y.
And, uh, do they have experience with takeout in the city of Boston?
Uh, yes, uh, they have a number of other restaurants, uh, i- i- in Boston, um, uh, I think it's, uh, three or four, um, uh, restaurants in, well, in, in Boston, in Cambridge, I think it's maybe two of them in Boston.
Which ones are they in Boston?
So, so, uh, I actually did include Jessica, uh, a- a- as a, as a panelist, which, could we let her join, um, uh, not sure?
She's on, she's been unmuted. She's available.
Oh, great, Jessica, did you mind?
Oh, great, Jessica, did you mind?
She's, I'm not sure if she's, uh, she, you may have to unmute Jessica.
Hi, I can speak regarding the operations. Um, so like John mentioned earlier, we are looking to do from nine AM to eleven PM for...
So please tell us which other operations you have in the city of Boston?
Yeah, so I've worked with, um, Love Art Sushi, Polka by Love Art, and then we also have a Love Art Polka Congress. So I'm familiar with, uh, takeout specifically the city of Boston.
Thank you, thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are fine, no questions, um, no changes.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Sierra D'Amico with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, this proposal has two letters of support. They completed their community process. One letter from the North End Waterfront Residents Association and the other from North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council. Our office would like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. Thank you.
Come on, man.
Madam Chair, I have no, oh, you don't, you have any letters?
Yeah, we have, uh, the letters from both North End neighborhood groups in support.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, uh, with, for this applicant only with the usual takeout language.
Second, linguists.
Okay, all those in favor?
So, uh, I'm, so I'm, I'm sorry, the, the petition was actually to remove the language, right, uh...
No, it, we, we know what it is, but it's, we are updating the language to this applicant only and...
Yep. And, and just, just clarify, I just wanted to show...
Hold on, excuse me.
Yep.
So there's a motion on the table. Was there a second?
I did second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set and please listen to the next case.
Can I, can I ask a question?
No, no, you be in touch with the office later. Let's move on.
Calling next case, BOA one-three-zero-zero-four-seven-seven-one-forty-two-St. Patal Street. Uh, violations of Article forty-one, section five, establishment of protected areas. Okay, uh, forty-one-five-dash-two-four area ratio is excessive. Forty-one, section six, rooftop additions and protected areas. Article forty-one, section eighteen point five, small project review. Name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself in this matter.
Um, this is a note to the, um, applicant. Uh, we started off with a six-member board. We're down to a five-member board. So that means that every one of us, you need every one of us' support to, um, to, uh, have this project go ahead. You may request an administrative deferral for a day when we have a fuller board. It's entirely up to you. What is your desire?
We'll proceed, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, Mr. Lacass, please, um, be succinct in your presentation and tell us what's being proposed.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston. Attorney for the applicant, Dr. Abhay Betty, who is the owner occupant of the top-floor unit at one-forty-two St. Patal Street. His proposal is to add a partial fourth floor on the top of the building to create six-hundred-fifty square feet of additional living area for his unit so he can stay in place. Um, largely, the zoning violations that Mr. Secretary read into the record relate to design review and that is, we have to submit to the BPDA for the same design review as would be, uh, done under small project review. And also, the rooftop addition in a protection area, as this is the St. Patal Architectural Conservation District, uh, requires a conditional use and review by the St. Patal Architectural District Commission and I...
Mr. Lacass, let me ask you, was, has this address been before this board before?
No, it has not.
It has not. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, uh, very straightforward. I think it's thoughtfully set back. Uh, no questions on the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Molly Griffin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, at this time, our office would like to defer to the George, to the board's judgment, sorry. Um, we held the butters meeting on February second. Um, neighbors logged on. It was mainly support. There was concern from one neighbor, I believe. The applicant worked with them. Um, I have received one letter in support of this project from the other, uh, tenants living in one-forty-two St. Patal Street. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hand at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. Uh, it sounds like there's already going to be BPDA review anyways.
Right. Is, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
It's now, it's now eleven-twenty-five. We will take a ten-minute break and resume at eleven-thirty-five, okay?
Recording stopped.
Meeting is being recorded.
Our Madam Chair, the floor is yours. You're muted, Madam Chair.
Just a reminder that if you wish to comment, please click the raise and button. And if you're connected by phone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself. Today, we have a six-member board, which means that you will need five members to be in support of your project for it to carry. So this is an opportunity for anybody here who to request an administrative deferral. Mr. Rogiro?
It is now after eleven thirty, so just briefly, for the eleven thirty cases, are there any deferrals or withdrawals?
Five sixty-six East Third Street.
Calling BOA one-two-seven-nine-three-nine-zero-five-sixty-six East Third Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscana with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. We are seeking a deferral for five sixty-six East Third. Plans were submitted, they're still under review, and we believe another, it has to be re-advertized.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Needs to be rea- uh, May tenth?
Sure.
Do we need to go- can we go later, maybe into June?
You wanna go to June? Okay, uh, June seventh?
June seventh at eleven thirty?
Yep.
Okay, see you then.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogiro, eighty-five Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Calling BOA one-two-eight-five-three-three-zero-eighty-five Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston. Seeking a deferral as the project has gone undergone another reduction in size, which will require another, a better meeting and further community review process, so we're seeking a deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please?
Uh, June seventh?
June seventh at eleven thirty?
Thank you so much.
Mr. Rogiro, sixty Stanley Street in Duarte?
Uh, BOA one-one-six-six-six-two-seven, sixty Stanley Street.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulgeni on behalf of the applicant. Ten Forbes Road, Brantree is the business address. And we're seeking a deferral. The plans went back into ISD. There was a little bit of confusion, so we just stopped them Thursday night, and we have to eliminate one of the violations, or otherwise it would have to be advertised.
And this is your second, um, deferral?
Um, before they- the plans were caught up in ISD, and this time I believe there was some confusion with the plans of your- whether they-
Okay, so let's- okay, so let's make sure that you have a date far enough into the future, so we can just bring closure to this, okay? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Uh, June twenty-first.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mr. Rogiro, one fifty-seven West Springfield Street.
Uh, BOA one-two-three-seven-zero-one-four, one fifty-seven West Springfield Street.
I'll be recusing myself, this is Eric.
May I have a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I put my name and address.
Yep, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, George Baranci, I'm the attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway. Madam Chair, we don't have the, uh, no harm letter, but we should have that imminent. I know there was a May date discussed earlier, we would certainly be ready for that, if that's still available.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion for- most of the defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, um, um-
We have- we have April twenty-sixth and May tenth.
Let's look for a date where, um, because Eric is recusing, where we will have a fuller board. If that's possible.
I don't know. The intent is to be sitting, so.
Eric, when- when will you not be sitting?
Um, actually, I was going to, uh, not to get into the business, uh, so I was gonna see if we could switch my days, um, with Hansi. So, uh, I have to- I have to go back and look at my, uh, the- the- my dates, unfortunately, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so this is just- let's just-
May tenth.
May tenth, I think May tenth should work.
May tenth at eleven thirty, okay?
Thank- thank you, and I do have one more, I'm sorry, it's eight Gordon Street.
Uh, BOA one-two-four-nine-zero-two-four.
Uh, George Baranci, I'm the attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. This one, the plans simply have not been reviewed yet by ISD.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The date, please?
Uh, May twenty-fourth?
So, May twenty-fourth at eleven thirty?
And any other takers? Okay, um. We're- we're seventy-five West Milton, right? Uh, calling case BOA one-two-six-nine-eight-seven-zero, seventy-five R, seventy-five B R, West Milton Street. Name and address for the record. Anyone? Coleman? Coleman, yeah?
I have a raised hand here, one second. Nicole? Nicole? And Nicole, are you on for this?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am, thank you. Um, good evening, for the record, my name is Nicole Dunphy, I'm an associate with High Point Engineering, representing the applicant, um, for the property at seventy-five R, West Milton Street. Uh, property is owned by Bernard and Joanne Coleman. And the proposal is to demolish the existing two-story, single-family home, and the detached one-car garage, and replace it with three two-story, um, townhouse units with, um, garage parking underneath and one garage space, so each unit would have two parking spaces.
Has- sorry to interrupt, but has this particular address been before this board before?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so is this building at the rear of another building?
It is, so, um, it off of West Milton Street, there's a little path. Um, so seventy-seven, uh, West Milton Street actually affects the- the street, and then seventy-five is behind that, adjacent to the, uh, commercial property identified as sixty-five Sprague. The old rail trail- train rail yard.
And let me just ask you, what is the lot area for this entire seventy-five lot, uh, seventy-five lot?
So the entire lot area, um, for this lot is eleven thousand one hundred and forty-six square feet.
And this is proposed to be part of the building currently at seventy-five, it's not supposed- proposed to be a separate lot?
It's not proposed to be a separate lot. The existing building would be demolished, and it would be replaced with the, uh, proposal you see in front of you.
Hey, what- it- do you have a site plan for all of this? Because I'm trying to understand, uh, really, um, what is happening on the entire lot? Will there be these three units plus another unit?
No, ju- just the three units. Um, I do- we did submit a site plan, I don't know if it's at the bottom.
There's a separate file that's a- a site plan, uh, Madam Ambassador.
Uh, because if it's an R address, that is, um, kind of triggers something for us. That might be a building behind a building.
I have another file that's separate, that has a site plan in it. I don't know, um-
Yeah, there was, you know, there was this architectural plan, there was also a narrative, and then the site plan within the existing conditions survey.
Yes, there are four files, or four, at least for me, four files essentially.
Yeah. Um, so the site plan, I'll- I'll explain it to you a little bit. It's a rectangular-shaped lot adjacent to, um, as I said, seventy-seven West Milton Street. The- the existing structure would be removed, the existing garage would be removed. We propose the three, um, townhouse units that you see before you, uh, with a twenty-foot-wide cave driveway on the north side of the property. The rear of the property would face the commercial development over at sixty-five Sprague Street.
Uh, sorry, no, I'm- I'm- I guess a lot, uh, I'm a visual person.
I know, I was-
I'm just having a hard time understanding this, um-
I mean, we submitted everything, I'm not sure why it's not in the package.
Um, so Eric, uh, can you explain this to us? Because we just, you- you- you know how we operate about buildings behind buildings.
Yes, so-
Can you? Go ahead.
I- I'm honestly, I'm not exactly sure if I understand the- the R part of it, I guess, 'cause there- I think there's only a single family on the site now, if I'm not mistaken. And so I don't know if I really understand where the R comes from. I understand that they're demolishing it, so there'll be no buildings on the site, and then they're gonna propose to build this, uh, three-family sort of complex attached on the site with a driveway on the- the one of the sides.
Okay, so let me understand, is- if- if we're standing at the West Milton Street, is this north elevation what we would be looking at? What we'd be looking at if we stood at-
No, you'd be looking at the west elevation. So it- so the short side is against the street, and the long side is, um, runs the length. It's a very deep lot that's on West Milton, on, I'll say, kind of, it's really east, but, uh, I'm sorry, west, but, um, the backside is- runs up against the railroad tracks.
That's correct, so this is, uh, as you see here, West Milton Street, uh, runs down here. There's a little alley that comes off of West Milton Street to access the rear property and the property across the street identified as seventy-one and seventy-three.
Got it, okay, this is what I was looking for, okay. Um, and, um, so three families, parking, okay, access through West Milton Street. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are- are fine, I don't have a problem with the plans. I- I mean, I think the proposed sort of use is a little odd for this. This seems to be a collection of singles, uh, running the length of the street. There is some multi-attached kind of across the street, so I- maybe that's what they're kind of taking their cue from, but it seems like-
There's also, um, a three-family, um, dwelling directly across the street at seventy-one, seventy-three.
Okay, so I think the thing we're trying to understand is that our townhouse is part of the design concepts in the area, because clearly this is a one-F-six-thousand district.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, this would be, you know, so we just need to understand how this works as townhouses versus, you know, a more typical three-family dwelling.
Mm-hmm. Understood, yeah, there are, um, some townhouses across the street, and they are in the- the two-F-five-thousand zone, but, uh, 'cause the- the- the zone line runs down, um, the street between the two lots that you see.
Okay, um, so these are then proposed to be mirages of what's across West Milton Street right there?
Yeah, they'd be similar, the- will be in the feel of a- a single-family home.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I- I have a question for Mr. Robinson. I mean, the- the way that this is designed, it's essentially a sideways orientation.
Yeah, that's- I- yes, Mr. Ehrlich, I think that, that's my, I- I think, I guess, there are some other examples on the street, I see them.
Okay, so that- so just to continue, so that west elevation, the bottom right of what we're looking at now, that's what you see from the street?
Um, I actually think it's the east. I mean, it's a little hard to- I think they have a mislabel, to be honest. Just, I'm looking at the orientation of the porches and things, so it's one of those el- it's the short elevation, I'll just say, on the street. It does not look like a great elevation.
Okay, so, um-
So that just seems to me kind of odd, Eric.
Okay, so let me- let me just help you out, um, um, ma'am who's here on behalf of the applicant. Um, I don't know, have you seen the BPDA recommendation?
I do, I have, um, just the denial letter from- which brought us to the ZBA.
Okay, so, um, it sounds like the BPDA also has issues with this proposal. They're recommending denial without prejudice because of excessive lot coverage, insufficient setbacks, and a lot of other things. So you may want to, uh, request a deferral, um, and come back with a plan that's, as- as you can tell from our questions.
Yeah.
Um, we're just having kind of a hard time with this. So you may wanna, on behalf of your client, request a- a deferral, and come back with us at a later date after you've relooked at the decision, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, um-
You might- if you need a couple of minutes to confer with your clients, we can go ahead with our next case and then come back to you.
Just a- Madam Chair, just a- a quick comment, which is if they do come back, that they should be thinking about orienting the design toward the street, because that's what people will see from the- from the street.
Yeah.
You actually cannot see this lot, um, west-
No, 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 just- just, let's- let's- let's just keep it on the table here, on the deferral. Uh, do you need a couple of minutes to check in with your clients, or should we just go ahead with the decision on this?
I think we'll go ahead with, um, a deferral and, um-
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, um, let's look at a date in June, please?
June twenty-first.
Tw- June twenty-first at eleven thirty, okay, see you then.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Correct. Calling next case BOA one-oh-eight, uh, one-oh-zero-zero-one-five-two-forty-three Rosewood Street. Violation of Article sixty, section nine, floor area ratio is excessive, Article sixty, section nine, radiant sufficient. Article- Article sixty, section nine, unu- unusual, unusable open space. Article sixty, section eight, uh, you've forbidden three families, forbidden use in a two-F-four-thousand subject. Name and address for the record.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith of Statera Law, business address three-five-nine Newbury Street in Beck Bay.
So please tell us what you're proposing to do.
Uh, so Madam Chair, members of the board, we have a pre-existing two-family, uh, with livable square footage in the basement level, first floor, second, and attic. We're proposing to expand the livable square footage in the basement, expand the livable square footage in the attic by way of the inclusion of dormers, uh, and essentially take a internal stairwell and put it to the rear, which triggers our- our- our rear yard insufficiency, and convert from a two-family to a three with a single unit located at the basement level of about twelve hundred square feet, a unit located on the first floor of approximately thirteen hundred and sixty-five square feet, and then a third unit comprised of the third floor and attic space of approximately nineteen hundred and eighty square feet.
And what's the zoning- what- sorry, what is the zoning district here?
Uh, we are a two-F-four-thousand, Madam Chair.
And how large is the lot area?
Uh, the lot at a layer, Madam Chair, is fifty-one hundred square feet. We're otherwise not changing the building envelope in any way, except for the external stairwell and the roof dormers.
Well, that's significant, so tell us, um, so this use is a forbidden use in this district? So, and it looks, uh, to me anyway, um, that there is fair use of the building, but, um, tell us about that basement use and how that is going to be, um, what's the floor-to-ceiling height, um, what's the floor-to-sil height? Um, will the utilities be separate? And, uh, we noticed as bedroom space in that basement, so kind of talk all that through with us, please?
Certainly, um, I also have the owner, who is himself, has his CSL license as project manager, maybe answer about, um, ceiling-to-floor heights. But there is intended to be two full means of egress, um, both out of the unit and accessible through the common area. Uh, if you see the basement portion of the plans, there is, uh, upgrading to, uh, for sprinkler and smoke compliance. The building will become fully sprinkled, and mechanicals are also in a portion of that front, uh, portion as well, hence the slightly reduced square footage of about twelve hundred square feet with an aggregate footprint of about thirteen sixty-five. But to answer your- further answer your question, Madam Chair, there are, uh, accessible, fire-accessible window wells, uh, and otherwise. So the exact, uh, height from floor to ceiling, I'm not certain of, but I can allow the owner to chime in, but from what I'm told, it is currently compliant for height.
Okay, uh, so we would be interested in floor-to-sil, and also, is there a driveway on this property?
Uh, Madam Chair, there is currently an existing driveway, there is a garage that services two vehicles. There's also enough room for off-street parking approximately three or four.
So let me see, looking at this plan, where is the driveway? Is it on the right or on the left?
Um, in the orientation of your plans in front of you, the driveway would be to the left of the structure.
Okay, um, do we have a plan that shows how the parking is going to work? Because we just wanna make sure there's- so I- so where is parking supposed to be?
Uh, parking is along the entire length of the two-minute driveway, and then also accessible in the garage itself.
Okay, so just let me ask a question. If the, at the smallest, at the most narrow point, it looks like the garage will be thirteen feet, three inches, if somebody needs to get out of that basement, will they have free access, um, to safety if there's a car parked there or not?
Um, Madam Chair, I would say, uh, driveways, I believe, are required to be ten feet in width. This is thirteen point five at a pinch point, so I would say that if vehicles are parked, there should still safely be, uh, s- safe means of egress out of windows that are accessible from that bedroom, or those bedrooms along that facade.
Okay, so let me ask you about the third unit, then. Um, tell us about that proposed third unit.
Um, the third unit being the uppermost unit, is that confirmed?
The attic, the one with the shed dormer.
Sure, um, so there's a proposal, if you're looking at the parcel, to add a shed dormer to the right, to briefly expand the existing square footage in the attic level. So the third unit would be, uh, comprised of primary living space on the third floor, of approximately thirteen hundred and forty-six square feet, with proposed living on the attic level of about six hundred and forty-seven square feet. So the, uh, aggregate size of the third unit will be one thousand nine hundred and approximately eighty square feet, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, I- the plans are- are consistent with the proposal. I think, uh, unfortunately, I think the- well, the attic seems fine for me in terms of the proposal, and I think it's consistent with the street. I think the- the- the issue's gonna be in the- in the lower level. I mean, it- it's basically below grade and, uh, kind of going against everything in terms of how we think about these units being there. And I think while the driveway might have a little extra space, the window, uh, wells are shown encroaching on that side, so I think it's just got some, uh, some issues with the lower level proposed units or bedrooms.
Okay, ha- any questions from the board? Um, Bob, um, did you wanna say something from BTD?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob Demiglio, Boston Transportation Department. I don't see how many cars would be parked in the driveway, because if there were four, then you have, uh, front yard parking for the one closest to the street. So I would like to limit, uh, if, you know, the board would agree, to limit the parking spaces to three- to limit the parking spaces to three spaces rather than four, if that's what they're proposing.
Okay, thank you. Um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, good mor, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Don C. Peoples here from the mayor's office and neighborhood services. Um, the applicant went through an extensive community process by attending numerous community meetings, including meetings with the River Street Civic Association on February second and February sixteenth, um, and a butters meeting conducted by the mayor's office and neighborhood services on, as well as on February sixteenth, um, my apologies, um, as well as, so, excuse me. Meetings with the River Street Civic Association on February second and February tenth, and then, um, a, a butters meeting held by the, um, neighborhood services on February sixteenth, as well as a March ninth, um, community meeting with the Edgewater Neighborhood Association. At all meetings, questions, concerns of the butters and neighbors have been addressed, support shown. Um, there should be letters from the River Street Civic Association and Edgewater Neighborhood Association on record, but I also want to highlight support from the Greater Matta Pan Neighborhood Council as well. Um, support highly comes from the, uh, homeownership aspect of proposal, as well as the proposed changes being used as an addition for the applicant's family members. Um, at this time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, um, given that information and given our, our history about basement maintenance, uh, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
I'll second that motion.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I oppose.
Um, so, motion carries. Next case.
Calling next case BOA one two nine eight eight one five four zero one four Washington Street. Uh, violations of Article sixty-seven, section thirty-three, insufficient front yard setback. Article sixty-seven, section eleven, use regulations, takeout use conditional. Name and address for the record. Mr. Duran?
I have a raised hand here, um. Hi, Jenna, you. I sent a request on you, are you here for this case?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, attorney Jennifer Allen for the owner of Lupe Duran.
Now, I don't know why my screen just blanks out, um, but, um, Mr., um, Ms. Allen, um. Um, just see. Okay, it's back up again, um.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yep, um, the, my screen, okay, got it, okay. So, um, this is for a takeout window, this was before this board, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago. Um, just to give the board, um, some perspective, this applicant and this business was before this board. They built that eight hundred and twenty-nine square feet front yard addition, um, and then came to this board for, for forgiveness. Um, there were issues with noise from this building, um, and then they were before us looking for a takeout. And it was a bit of a rigmarole, um, and so, um, I don't know what, I don't remember what the outcome was, if they withdrew it. Uh, but, Ms. Allen, you're back, so tell us what's being proposed this time.
So we are back, thank you for your time. Um, just as before, we are short a mere, the frontage, we're short a mere five feet. Um, we're seeking to add the additional canopy, which is on the left side. Um, we've actually made the canopy smaller this time, and it's approximately eighteen by ten, that will accommodate for processing the takeout orders. It's going to allow my client to create the additional services to the public. Um, as you've already mentioned, we already have the canopy for the entrance, for the patrons walking in. The additional canopy on the left side will be in conformity with that entrance and structure. Um, the addition that we are proposing is consistent with the character of the existing street. The buildings across the street come right up to the curb, uh, all of the buildings up and down this street, thus there's no detriment to the existing space or the neighborhood. This is in harmony with the neighborhood.
Mister, I will ask you, because, um, I happen to be familiar with this restaurant, um, and I, I think the last time we left it is, a question to you was, why couldn't takeout occur through the building? Uh, because, um, that, that oversized, um, entranceway um, does allow you some flexibility to do takeout from an existing frontage.
Yes, and, uh, my client is on here as well, and he can also speak to it. As you can see, the right side is the canopy that's already built, the left is what we are proposing. Um, which I know one request prior to this was to keep it handicap accessible, which is what we are doing. The patrons that enter in on the right side, enter in and then they wait to be seated, but the takeout orders are also right at the register at the left. There's a buildup with people now coming back out to, uh, enjoy dinners in public, but there's still a lot of people that aren't comfortable still going out, and he has an increase in the takeout, like, if he, they could have the takeout orders. And the people will build up there, and there's not enough space that's allowing that.
You know, um, um, let's just be clear for the rest of the board members. This is not a canopy in the usual sense of the word of a canopy. This is the, though, if we look at the front of the building, that vestibule is a, um, actual structure. Um, and so, Ms. Allen, will you confirm that this will, this will be actually a structure and not just a, I don't know, a, um, a canopy in the usual sense of the word of canopy?
Correct, it'll be a, a structure, yes.
Okay, so this is pretty much what we had seen before. Uh, why are you back with the same proposal?
So we, we actually, it's a bit different, we, we made the, the additional structure smaller to accommodate. We kept the employee bathroom upstairs, we made it also handicap accessible to satisfy the requirements and some of the feedback that we had received last time. That was what was requested. We've also been working with the neighborhood, we had meetings with the neighborhood, which they are also in support of this, and Mr. Duran is also invested in this neighborhood as he works there and lives there, so. We've been working with the neighborhood as well.
Okay, uh, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Um, uh, you, you nailed it, you, you, I was trying to figure out where the canopy is, but I understand it's a, it's an addition, so we're adding FAR, right? And this is a, this is interior, interior space. Um, it, you know, it is consistent with the vestibule that they built before, so, um, I think the, the questions are not necessarily with the proposal, we understand what they're proposing.
Got it. Um, any questions from the board?
Yeah, as I recall, the two issues, uh, previously, one was that there was a removal of an in- interior bathroom that seemed to make little sense, and then the actual handicap accessibility wasn't gonna work with the, uh, dimensions of the door, um. So I, uh, Mr. Robinson, can you tell if those have been resolved?
You, you're talking about the door into the takeout area?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does not appear to meet accessibility, um, the door looks much, much smaller, and
Yeah.
there's only a four-foot-eight space between the door and the counter, which is not enough, um, in terms of affordability. So it, it doesn't seem to work from an MAAB standpoint, um, but I assume that would be, uh, fixed by, uh, uh, ISD if this went forward. But I, I guess we can, we can sort of put some brackets on it if it goes forward.
Right, I, I mean, basically, uh, as far as the plans are concerned, it's not handicap accessible.
Correct, it doesn't appear to be, that's correct.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Support, good afternoon. My name is Udo Nochi, and I'm the Rosendale Liaison. We held a community meeting on, on February sixteenth. Um, the community seemed to be in general support of this project. We did have concerns over the effect of takeout on traffic, but that'll be remedied with the parking lot. Um, Allen, uh, Jen Allen did meet with Healy Two-Come and Two-Susid Neighborhood Association. In the area, while I haven't received any letters of support, they did seem to be in support of this project as well. And we would like to defer judgment to the board.
There's one letter of opposition in the file.
Ms. Allen, can you tell us where the parking lot is?
So there's a parking lot that's in back of the building, and if you were looking at the building from the street, there's a left access entrance, and there's parking all in back of the building.
So did that outdoor seating go away?
The, the outdoor seating, if you're facing the building from the street, is on the right side.
And how many spaces are in the back?
Um, I'm not exactly positive, I'm, my, I know my client is on, and he could speak to that, twenty-one, actually.
There's twenty-one spaces in the back, and how many of those are taken up by staff?
Um, a lot of the staff will either come in and, um, they're, they're taking the transit. There's only about four that have, that take up any of those spots.
Okay, um, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else to speak on this?
Regarding also, if I just might make a mention.
No, no, hold on, hold on, hold on. Uh, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else to speak on this?
I have, I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Uh, calling next case, I just make sure I got this right, yep, so we're now into eleven thirty. Uh, calling the next case BOA one two six, uh, one two four six seven eleven. Address is five ninety-three, five ninety-five Albany Street. Violations are Article thirty-two, section four, G-cut applicability, Article sixty-four, section sixteen, floor area ra, floor area ratio excessive. Article sixty-four, section sixteen, building height is excessive, Article sixty-four, section sixteen, rear yard insufficient. Article sixty-four, section thirty-six, off-street parking and loading requirements and, and maneuverability. Article sixty-four, section thirty-six, no, I already developed one. Article sixty-five, section fifteen, use regulations, multifamily dwelling is conditional. Name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Lecas, Lecas Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. Also on the Zoom is Andrew Bressard, who is the project proponent, and Katia Al Tullian, who is our architect from Stack and Company. Um, we were last before you in February, and there was a request to change the unit count from nine to ten as a good faith gesture, and that has been done. So the, the building itself is largely the same, we could stop at this slide, this is just a, a good indication of the context of the neighborhood.
So was this, I'm sorry, Ms. Lecas, but was this the project that is, um, replacing, um, the Bahai Center?
Yes, the, um.
Okay, so the question that we had was that this, eh, project goes, uh, lot line to lot line.
Yes.
Proposed to eliminate, uh, was it three on-street needed parking spaces?
The curb cut on the side of the building has been reduced to twelve feet, we've worked closely with Mr. D'Amico to, um, minimize that curb cut. So it is now only a twelve-foot curb cut on the side of the building. The other garage access is on the rear of the building, stop right here on this slide, um, which is a private way, it's called Thorn Street. It's a through street, um, between the back of the proposed new building, and the building that you can see in the foreground of the picture is the new Smith Building, but the width of the street together with the space between the buildings is fifty feet from the rear of the building, and you can see that the rear of the buildings all line up there. But the Thorn Street distance is fifty feet from the rear. The second garage door is on the back of the building, accessed from Thorn Street, and then the side of the building is a twelve-foot curb cut for three cars, three cars enter on the side, and three cars will enter on the back.
Okay, and, um, tell us about the sizes of the units?
So the unit count is now ten with one affordable IDP unit. There are two one-bedroom units ranging in size from six oh nine to eight hundred. There are four two-bedroom units that are all ten sixty-three, one thousand sixty-three square feet. There are three three-bedroom units at fourteen fifty-five square feet, and there is one, um, the unit on the top floor, a four-bedroom unit at two thousand three hundred fifty-six square feet.
Two thousand, sorry, two thousand three hundred and fifty-six square feet?
Yes.
Okay, and if I remember too, the last time neighbors were concerned about that traffic and parking on the alley?
No, Madam Chair, we actually never got to the, uh, neighborhood, public comment portion of the hearing, but we have universal support for this project, which we'll get to. There's also, uh, street-level retail space on the front of the building to activate that, uh, the street-level storefront, and that has been expanded to wrap around the corner of the building to further activate the street front. Again, responsive to community requests that we make that corner as lively as possible. Across the street is the, the new South End Exchange, which is a one-million-square-foot complex that construction has.
Hold on, um, tell us, is, is our roof deck still being proposed?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is one, um, public roof deck, and there is one private roof deck on the top floor, of course.
Okay.
Each of the units have small balconies for some measured usable outdoor space. Um, also, since the last hearing, um, ISD has now issued a demolition order for the existing Bahai, uh, Center building. It was in significant state of disrepair, and we had been working with the Landmarks Commission. Um, but since the last hearing, ISD has determined that the temporary shoring in, interior to the building is insufficient, and the building um, now has a demolition order in place, but we continue to work with the Landmarks Commission on the design of the new building, as new structures in the protection area are subject to the Landmarks, uh, Commission, and we met with them on an advisory basis for their feedback, and the design that you see before you is reflective of those suggestions from the Landmarks Commission.
Has this, has the, the height of the building gone up since you were last here?
It has not, Madam Chair, the occupiable floor space is at sixty-nine, which is consistent with the seventy-foot maximum in the south end. Um, the mechanical and the elevator overrun for the access to the roof decks and the stairway access to the roof decks exceeds the three hundred thirty square foot maximum. Therefore, it counts toward the height, thus our height excessive violation, but the occupiable space is one foot below the seventy-foot height limit.
And is this still scheduled to be a condo?
Yes, these are ownership units, which will make the IDP unit an ownership opportunity as well.
So before you were one, four one-bedrooms at a thousand, four two-bedrooms, that's fourteen twenty-two, and one three-bedroom at twenty-one hundred, okay? So basically, you've gotten your space by reducing the size of the one-bedrooms, okay? Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the, the plans are good, uh, you know, my office is actually two blocks down, and I know this area very well, I think the, um, the proposed height is, I think, is fairly consistent with Albany Street, um. Didn't hear the case before, uh, but I do understand the rear access point. My, I guess my only question, I think there was a question of the side, and, and I don't know if Mr. D'Amico might wanna speak to that in terms of the side en, uh, vehicular entrance, but no other questions, um, for me in terms of the, the proposal. But no other questions for me in terms of the proposal, except for that access point.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition? Please, can everybody else, please mute yourself?
Hi, yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Kim Curselli from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant had an abutage meeting hosted by our office in September of 2021, where sport was shown by the abutters. They also went before the Blackstone Franklin Square Neighborhood Association, where they received full support. The applicant also received multiple letters of support from the abutters. And this would be a great mission and bring livelihoodness to the area if this time our office would like to defer to the board on this matter. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just, uh, we do have the, the G-Cod letter from the board.
Oh, sorry, uh, Christian is, is he on?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, Christian, go ahead.
That's fine, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Grauman Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Audits Chair, members of the board.
Anna Calderon from Council President's Fliem's Office. The councilor would like to go on recording support based on feedback from both neighbors and the Blackstone Franklin Neighborhood Association, as well as the inclusion of affordable unit and other compromises and revisions to the plans with the community. We respectfully ask that the proponent continues to work closely with the neighbors during the construction phase. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just have one raised hand, but it's Bob from the Transportation Department. Bob?
Uh, yes, Bob D'Amico, Madam Chair, um, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. I'm just a little concerned about this Thorn Street because when I Googled it, it was like under construction. And I really don't understand how this is going to work, only because it's not reflected in the actual site itself. So I'd like to have some clarification on how Thorn Street is going to work because I, I have no idea how wide it is and I just want to make sure that the maneuverability is, is okay.
Okay, um, let's see if we have any more raised hands and then the applicant can respond to that.
I have no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, go ahead, Mr. Lacass. Can you respond to that?
Yes, Mr. D'Amico, Thorn Street indeed is a new through-street connection connecting the two blocks. It's a 20-foot-wide, uh, street. It is designated as a private way, but it's 20 feet wide. And then on one of our slides, we show that the distance between the back of the proposed new building and the Smith, which is the new 100, a 10-story building along the street there, that's, that's the through-street Thorn that has been created. And the total distance is 50 feet and the private way itself is, is 20 feet.
So you have access to that Thorn Street as an abutter?
Yes, as an abutter, we have, you know, as you know, rights to the midline and the private way, as does the budding property, with equal access to both parties on either side of the private way and the right of the public to use the private way because it connects two public, public streets.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BDD. I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
We actually have South End.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we're gonna, um...
Thank you so much.
Okay, um...
Call. Okay, calling next case, BOA 1215510, 510 Canterbury Street. Uh, violations are Article 29, Section 4. It's an agreed-protection overlay district. And Article 60, Section 40, off-street parking and loading requirement. Name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Green. I'm an attorney with Ruben &amp; Rudman at 53 State Street. I'm here in behalf of St. Michael Cemetery. Uh, I believe in attendance with me is Michael Sheehan from the cemetery, Italia Pasiato from Verdant Landscaping, and Eric Pearson, our engineer. Uh, we have, this, as you see on your screen, is the present photo of St. Michael Cemetery.
Hello, um, hold on, Mr. Green. Um, you might have missed this, but we are a six-member board. And for approval, you need all five members, you need five members in support. So, um, we, um, are, um, offering, um, as we usually do, deferrals for, um, for applicants, um, administrative deferrals.
Six members are fine for us.
Okay, and, and let me just make clear, is anybody, is anybody recusing? Okay, so let's go ahead.
Okay, so St. Michael's, uh, was formerly the Italian Catholic Cemetery Association. It's located in Jamaica Plain, Rosendale, and this is in Matapan Ward 14. The cemetery is on Walk Hill Street, Canterbury Street, American Legion Highway. And it has approximately 46 acres of cemetery grounds. The site plan you see in front of you is the landscaping plan for the 12-acre site, which is bounded by Canterbury Street, American Legion Highway, which is the Green Belt roadway, and Walk Hill Street. Located on this site presently is a crematorium building, which was permitted by DEP, that's the Department of Environmental Protection at state level, for crematory in 2019. And also a chapel building with a columbarium and a chapel, offices, and administrative offices. The site itself is located within the so-called Open Space Cemetery District, uh, located in Ward 14. It's subject to the Greater Matapan Neighborhood District zoning. Uh, and as I indicated, the entire cemetery is also located in Jamaica Plain and Rosendale, all of which is in an open space cemetery district. The uses for the cemetery, for a chapel, a mortuary, a crematorium, a columbarium, all of the funeral-related uses under Article 2A are allowed in this district because they are not allowed in any other district in the city of Boston except for an open space cemetery district. The project we propose is, you'll see outlined and read on this photo, is to add to the existing chapel building a 7,600-square-foot addition, which will house four additional crematorium retorts, as they are referred to. Uh, and this building will have a viewing space, offices, and so forth. The...
So as I look at the violations, looks like the two violations you have is the G-Pod, Green Belt Protection Overlay District, and off-street parking and loading requirements. So in your, um, in your presentation, if you can speak to what your anticipated increase in use is going to be with these four additional crematorium retorts? So how many will there be in total?
There are presently eight. There'll be 12 in total.
12 retorts, okay. And, um, so if you can tell us what the increase in capacity is that you're anticipating with this four additional, um, as far as parking and loading?
So it's, there is no loading requirement for the size of this project. The parking citation by ISD, you'll see on the parking plan, which is Plan C-3, uh, there is a parking area located, plus parking along the street, uh, the interior roadway. And we have 26 parking spaces. The requirement is 20. So I will not question what ISD cited. I'm just asking that the board approve the 26 because under the code, the requirement is 20. And we have 26.
Okay, so just tell us then, how, um, let's see, where? So let's see, so we see the proposed building and the total square feet of the proposed building is 7,600 square feet.
Correct.
Now let's talk about the anticipated increase in use. Are you expecting a 30% increase, um, a 25% increase? What are you expecting?
Well, since the onset of COVID and the last two years, crematorium use has increased, most likely because of the, and also because of the space for burial has been reduced. So this will be, we have eight now. We'll, with four additional, that's an increase of perhaps 25%, okay? Or I should say, uh, 50% to increase it to 12 retorts in the building. Okay, our actual capacity is, is basically at 60% capacity. We're not at full capacity under the permit from DEP. So we don't envision that to be in excess of probably 60% or so.
So you, you anticipate to continue to be at 60%? So it means the, your other retorts will be used less frequent, less frequently?
Right, they're not, this is not a 24-hour operation, Madam Chair.
Okay.
The, if I may address the, the G-Pod, we do have an extensive landscaping plan, which is, uh, shown in the plans here. I believe it's Plan V, as in Victor I. Oh, I'm sorry, L, L1? Uh, it's right at the beginning, so it's L-1. What we do have is approximately 112 new shrubs and trees to plant, evergreen, deciduous, ornamental.
Well, I, I know that you'll have to go through the Parks Department on that. So I'm figuring you're in safe hands on that. Uh, but let me just go back to how are you anticipating the business to work? So I'm assuming that, um, I mean, I, I guess I just don't know how many people come to view a, um, to view, uh, you know, a crematorium activity? Um, so can you explain how that's going to work?
I'm gonna ask Michael Sheehan, I believe, who should be on the, to raise his hand and participate.
I, I have some questions too, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, just let's, let's get this, the, the basics on the record.
I, this can raise, if they could be recognized?
It's Michael Sheehan. Not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
It's Michael Sheehan, uh, General Manager, St. Michael Cemetery, 500 Canterbury Street in Boston.
Okay, so I think you heard my question. Can you explain to us how, um, this? Can I, can I ask everybody who is shooting us, um, comments that you should in fact wait and make sure that your comments are on the record when we do call for comments? Because, um, these ones that you, you shoot to us don't necessarily get into the record. Make sure in the meantime that you, you are coordinating. So I have a couple of people speaking and each person gives us new information rather than repeat what everybody has said. For those of you who've sent in letters, we've seen the letters, we've reviewed the letters. In the meantime, Mr. Sheehan, please go ahead and explain to us how this is going to work because the land use impact that, that is cited here, very specifically, is off-street parking. So explain to us if people come for viewings when the crematorium is, uh, is working.
Currently, we have a viewing area in our existing crematory that's, uh, very small in size. And so we're trying to, uh, further serve the community of Boston with different religious groups and ethnic groups that want to witness cremations take place, which has come about more often in the past couple of years. So in that design, we have a larger viewing area, which you can see is the middle part of the, uh, the building next to the retorts. So that's why we incorporated a parking area so we could accommodate any additional parking that would be required. Uh, there is quite a bit of parking within the cemetery itself. There, you know, there's not a, a need for parking on the street itself on Canterbury Street. I think that's your question. As far as in, uh, increased use in the building, that's very unpredictable. It depends on the rate of cremation, how that rises, uh, within the next few years. But the, the main point of the building is to accommodate, uh, an area where families can witness the cremation and have services on-site.
And is that an active brook in the rear of the building?
Yes, it's a Canterbury brook, yeah.
And are you within 100 feet of that brook?
We've gone to the, uh, Conservation Commission and have approval and it made all, you know, all the requirements and conditions that they've asked us to follow.
Okay, and a lot of the comments we've seen are concerned about air quality. Is there any kind of response you have to that?
Uh, we filed a permit, I guess it's about two years ago now, with the DEP. That's who monitors our emissions. And we've shared that with the neighborhood group. It's a, I think it's a 20-page permit that certain conditions that we have to follow are very restrictive. And we also have our engineer, uh, on it that's available to any particular questions that you have. But we've met all the permitting requirements for the DEP for the new required units. That's where we started the process.
And can you highlight what some of those air quality, uh, restrictions are that, so that we can have that on the record?
Madam Chair, I submitted to the board a complete copy of the permit approval from DEP, as well as the Boston Conservation Commission approval. But as a summary, there are operational production and emission limits in the permit. There are compliance demonstrations. There's 17 monitoring and, uh, reporting, testing requirements in the permit. There's 14 conditions for record-keeping in the permit. And there are 14 special terms and conditions in the permit. So we have been through this. Our contribution, if you will, to the emissions is minor compared to the surrounding area with respect to the modeling that was done, just to be submitted to DEP, which was done based upon existing conditions from the monitoring station located in Harrison Ave and, uh, at Nubian Square, which is the criteria that DEP uses. We reviewed this with a number of individuals, with people in the city. The Boston Public Health Commission staff has indicated that this is a DEP review and approval. Uh, they only answer to perhaps, uh, a request for an inspection. They have, they don't have control over this. This is a DEP permit.
And let me ask you, uh, let me ask, Mr. Sheehan, how often is DEP out there? And how often is your air quality submittal due at, um, at DEP?
Uh, there's a two-year source registration that we comply with and submit that to DEP. And DEPs, uh, can, you know, do an inspection at their, you know, anytime that they'd like.
And, um, just to clarify, um, that in fact, even with these four additional, um, crematorium retorts, you will still be functioning at 60% capacity? Just to give your other, other retorts, um, you're not going to use all 12 of them? I'm, I, clarify for me that you will not be using all 12 of them at the same time?
Uh, that's, that's a possibility. Our permit is, um, issued for operating all 12 at the maximum number of hours that they've allowed us to operate. So the admissions are calculated on that.
And what are the hours?
Do you have the hours in the permit? I don't have the permit on me, but we have it, I think we've submitted the copy of the permit to you as well.
Okay, I...
That's one of our conditions, Jim.
Okay.
Can I ask any questions?
Hold on, hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, so I, I guess I can only weigh in on the, on the, the architecture. I think the proposed addition is consistent with it and I understand the landscape plan and the proposed parking. So, um, I have no questions on the sort of proposal of the building.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, a couple. Just, uh, the first one. So for the viewings, those will be scheduled? Like, you can't, you won't be having like two funerals coming in back to back, like concurrently, right? You'll schedule them?
Everything is scheduled, yes.
Everything's scheduled, so, okay. Um, and then with the retorts, how, you were gonna look up the hours of operation, but correct, correct me if I'm wrong. How, you were gonna look up the hours of operation, but correct, correct me if I'm wrong. If you're operating at sixty percent capacity, it doesn't really make sense to turn on and start another retort, right? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why, if you're only operating at sixty percent, why do you, why do we need, why do you need four more?
Um, it's the, it's the demand of the day. So you're not gonna, it's the demand of the day. If you have, uh, several funerals and several, uh, scheduled cremations, then you use your equipment based on what you need as of the particular day. Subject to change, subject to change at any hour or, you know, day.
So cumulatively throughout the year, you're at sixty percent, but some days it's very busy and other days it's, it's.
Correct.
A couple, yep.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, just wanna clarify.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, so I'm anticipating that, that there will be a lot of hands raised on this. I will take comments from, uh, in, in addition to elected officials, um, to, um, maybe five, um, residents. So please, residents, we've seen your letters as I said before. Um, so please coordinate among yourselves who is going to speak on your behalf. And anybody who speaks, please give us new information. Okay, let's start with elected officials or representatives of elected officials.
Hi, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, down to people here from the mayor's office and the services. Um, the, there was an abudders meeting held by Neighborhood Services on October twenty-seventh, where one support was shown from a resident, um, as well as, um, a letter of support sent to the zoning board of appeal. However, at the same meeting, uh, neighbors, neighbors of abudders and neighborhood, um, members of neighborhood associations voiced concerns regarding possible mercury emissions and emissions from metals and or clothing that the decedent may wear during the cremation process, the possibility of, um, having air quality monitors being, um, set up along American Legion Highway as well as Walk Hill Street. Um, concerning with the possibility of twelve retorts operating at full capacity and at all on the, on the premises, as well as the outer dispersal area being, uh, forty-five hundred feet in all directions. Um, there was an additional meeting held in the form of sidewalks of Saint Michael Cemetery with a representative from Greater Manapana Neighborhood Council on November twenty-third, then a meeting with the Greater Manapana Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee on January twentieth. Um, again, additional meetings were held, um, in the form of site, in a, of a sidewalk with, uh, Mount Canterbury Neighborhood Association, representatives from Mount Hope Canterbury, um, Neighborhood Association, uh, Boston Nature Center, as well as the Woodborne Neighborhood Association on December sixteenth. Um, but as the neighbors have shown continued concern of the proposal, um, the proposal's pop, um, possible environmental impacts of the expansion of the cremation, of the cremation facilities and how process, how processes will be monitored. Uh, but as the neighbors have shown concern regarding the fact that there are only two crematories in the area, um, Saint Michael's and Forest Hills, and how they, um, are fairly close in proximity in the, in environmental impacts of such. Um, the same concerns for schools and facilities in the areas such as the Haley Pilot Colony Use, um, Center and the Clark, Clark Cooper Community Garden. The Greater Manapana Neighborhood Council, Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association and Woodborne Neighborhood Association are in opposition and/or ask for deferral or denial of the proposal at this time. The mayor's office have received a large number of, uh, of letters of opposition as well as emails in opposition from abudders and neighbors. Uh, we would like to highlight the permit approvals and the permit, and the, of the proposal being in compliance with Mass DEP, um, the Boston Conservation Commission, the Air Pollution Control Commission, as well as the Boston Public Health Commission, um, as well as the applicant choosing to adopt a new policy to limit, to, to attempt to limit possible mercury emissions from the cremation process by talking with funeral directors to remove, um, uh, mercury alloys from, um, fillings and or, um, clothing that may contain metals as well as pacemakers, hit replacements, knee replacements, things of the such. Um, at this time, the mayor's offices would like to go on record in opposition of this proposal. Thank you.
So the mayor's office is going on record? It's not, uh, leaving it to the discretion of the board?
Correct, we will be in opposition at this time, thank you.
Okay, um, so, um, anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
I have one more question, Madam Chair.
No, no, hold on, let's just get all the, all the people on record and then we will close off with any outstanding information.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, City Councilor, Worell's office. Uh, we would like to commend, uh, the team for their community engagement as mentioned by the mayor's office, willingness to meet, site visit, explanation of the process. Um, but, uh, we do have to, uh, go on record in opposition citing the, the neighbor opposition and just a desire for more localized monitoring of, of air quality in that area to increase, uh, the, the amount of retorts in this project.
And, uh, Rick Yoder, you've been muted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, uh, Rick Yoder, uh, one eighty Mount Hope Street in Rosendale, the Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood. The, the main problem, uh, stems from the, uh, the, uh, Mass Department of Environmental Protection. It has, it's close to a secret, um, process in deciding this. We didn't learn for, it was a year before we learned they had already issued the permit and basically no public input, uh, opportunity to speak and go to meetings and so on. And we have already found one flaw in their permit, which had to do with mercury. They did not discuss mercury in their permitting. Um, fortunately, we had a very good, uh, conversation with Saint Michael's about this. And after some discussion, they agreed to require, uh, all the funeral homes that use our, their services to remove, uh, the, the fillings from the cadavers that would have mercury in them. That would not have happened, that did not happen through the PPA.
So, so Mr. Yoder, can you please tell us, you know, after your, um, you know, your, your, your deeper dive into this, whether you're in support or in opposition of this proposal?
At this point, I'm in opposition. What, we wanna work with the cemetery, so Saint Michael's, to solve some of these problems, but we're not there yet. There are other pollutants we're worried about that haven't really been adequately addressed in our estimation. And we're, uh, we're at a disadvantage that none of us are experts. So we're doing a lot of catch-up research to try to understand this. And trying to find an expert in the city would be, um, you know, independent.
So, so, um, the, the technical expertise at DEP, you're questioning them? And the Air Pollution Control Commission, you're questioning their, their veracity too?
I don't know anything about the, the, the city's, um, department. Uh, I, I don't wanna be that severe on the DEP. I understand they're underspended, but in fact, that is what has happened.
Okay, got it, okay. Uh, may I hear from a couple of other people too?
Yeah, I have a couple, Sarah?
Hi, everybody, my name is Sarah Evan Colvario. I live at eight Catherine Street in Rosendale. Um, I live, it's in the Woodborne neighborhood. Um, I just wanna point to the fact, and I appreciate very much, um, both the mayor's office and, um, uh, the office that Dustin Gardner speaks for, um, sharing the opposition that the, the neighborhoods that are in this.
Sarah, Evan, can you, can you please, um, tell us, get to the point, please?
Yes. Um, I just gave you my address and said thank you to the people who've already spoken.
Okay.
Um, I, I just wanna stress the fact that, um, we as neighbors have really asked for support from the, uh, Saint Michael's, which is a business, to really clarify for us how this is safe. And although you just asked Rick Yoder about the, the safety of DEP, um, just because one entity says things are safe doesn't mean that we as residents and also schools and preschools and nature centers don't deserve to have people help us understand how this affects the environment, affects our health. So I think, I think the, the city.
Are you requesting a deferral or what, what is your?
Yes, we're requesting, I am requesting on behalf of the, or in addition to the neighborhood, a deferral, um, or a, uh, denial.
Okay, let's, um, please, for any other people who have raised hands, give us new information, please. Um, and once you've spoken, put your, put your hand down. Only new information, okay? Thank you.
Go ahead, Liba.
Hi, um, hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, I am Liba Ingram. I live at eighty-seven Florian Street in Jamaica Plain. It's in the Woodborne Neighborhood Association. And the only new information I would add is that when we say working with, uh, Saint Michael's and trying to learn more is there are possibilities for making the installation of these, uh, retorts safer, um, to allow for less, uh, pollutions, pollutants to be released from the retorts. That's the kind of thing we would like to explore with Saint Michael's and to have them include in the plans. For example, it, in, uh, cemetery, uh, Mount, oh gosh, I've forgotten the name. Uh, the cemetery in Cambridge, um, they have wet scrubbers to, uh, installed to take out further pollutants. There's no indication, as far as I know, in the plans for Saint Michael's to do that kind of thing. And there are other things that could be done to provide safer environmental impact.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ambassador, anybody else?
Just had a, a raise, a hand come up for Chris, um, just send him to talk. Um, Chris, I have a request, unmute you, go ahead, can you state your name and address?
And after Chris will take one more pass and, and then, um, you know, move, move to, uh, bring closure to this.
Okay, Chris, do you have an address?
Christina LaF, I live at fifteen Southborne Road, uh, which is part of the Woodborne neighborhood. I'm speaking as a neighbor to the cemetery and also as a customer. Uh, my funeral director, uh, who has been planning, uh, the disposition of my remains with me, has let me know that, uh, the Saint Michael Cemetery is the least expensive option for cremation. Uh, and until, uh, until the state approves a more ecologically sound disposal method, uh, that's what I will have to go with. But I don't want my legacy to affect the health and well-being of my neighbors after I'm gone. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. And Sean, go ahead. One second, you are muted. Okay, Sean, I sent a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Yeah, we can hear you now.
Great, thank you, sorry about that. Uh, my name is Sean Peventure and I'm at seventy-two Southborne Road, uh, not far away from the project. Um, requesting a denial and the new information I'm bringing is that I don't think anyone has mentioned that, uh, this project is across the street, uh, American Legion Highway from the, um, Boston, the Mass Audubon Boston Nature Center, um, a great outdoor space, uh, that serves, underserves communities, uh, primarily in the city of Boston. It also houses a preschool, uh, but that is a stone's throw from the project.
Thank you, and then we know there's that public school on American Legion. So yes, we do get, have a sense of the neighborhood. Okay, um, um, I'm just gonna close comment from the community and opinions from the. Uh, let me just go back, um, and ask if there are any more outstanding questions from the board?
I, I just have one, going back to, to the loading and logistical operations of this expansion. Uh, how are they going to accommodate? Do they have room in, in the, the expanded facility to hold decedents? Are they gonna expand their, their morgue area where the medical examiner viewings happen? Like, are they taking that into account?
Yes, there is a, uh, there's a storage area for, uh, the medical examiner to witness cremations.
And you're expanding that, could you expand the capacity?
Yes, just because it's an additional building.
Correct. Okay.
Be separate, kind of separate operation.
Okay.
And Mr. Sheehan, um, can you please, um, tell us, um, whether, um, whether individuals are, um, cremated with clothes or without clothes? Just so that we know, um, if that's an additional, uh, pollutant into the air?
Uh, they are, we, we receive, uh, the human remains in a closed container, whether it's a casket or cremation tray, what it's called. And so we don't, we don't open, uh, that container.
I see, okay, so, so, okay, got it, okay? Um, and, um, I'm assuming that Mount Auburn, um, is, is managed by DEP? Their permit is also managed by DEP?
They are, we actually, I, I heard that they, uh, the neighborhood said that they do additional, uh, requirements or, or additional, uh, equipment added on to theirs. And we researched their permit and did not see any additional equipment that we don't use. Matter of fact, I think our standards were a little bit, a little bit more stringent than theirs.
Okay, 'cause, um, and you do have scrubbers?
We do not have scrubbers, uh, it's, uh, I, I don't believe that's an equipment that's available in addition to.
Okay.
It's, you know, we, we purchase, uh, the equipment through a manufacturer and they do, uh, they do all the testing and, uh, it's almost like you wouldn't add an additional piece of, uh, like muffler to, you know, car that you purchased. This is the equipment, you know, they purchase from the manufacturer.
Got it, okay. Okay, um, board, um, this is, any, any, any last questions? And then we get to a decision. Um, any last questions? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny without prejudice. It seems to me that there is issues that have been raised that haven't been fully addressed, but that the, but that there's a possibility of finding a solution that acceptable to everyone. So that's my motion.
Sarah, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, it sounds to me like, like, um, there's some kind of communication breakdown or something like that. Uh, though I do, do understand that you've tried, so please continue working with your abudders. Uh, because yes, there is a need for this, um, and we, um, you know, so thank you. Uh, Mr. Rogiro?
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, calling, um, but let's, uh, let's circle back. We're gonna call an extension that, see if the person ended up eventually jumping on. It was, uh, BOA eight two two five two eight seventy-one Mozart Street. Is there anybody online for that?
Can we defer this then to the next meeting?
Uh, yep, make a motion to defer.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed at the date, please?
Uh, April twenty-sixth.
Okay, April twenty-sixth at nine thirty, we'll see them then. Please, if somebody from the ISD office could be in touch with them to let them know. Thank you, uh, meeting is now adjourned.
No, no, no.
No, we have one more?
Eight Norton Street, right?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was deferred five twenty-four, okay? The meeting is now adjourned.
Recording stopped.
Eight twenty-four, thank you, everybody.
Have a good day.
Thank you, bye.
Bye.
Thank you.